Good morning. Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 16, 2018. You'll all rise if you can for the pledge. County Council, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time for board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any board announcements? Supervisor Mills, your lights on.
We do have one, Angels Camp. You have the Wild West Fest going on on the 20th of this month, and the Highway 49 will be closed through downtown Angels Camp, so you will be having to take the bypass if you want to get through there. But it's a great event, and we hope that everybody who's interested in our events will attend. It is always well visited, so enjoy your time.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, October 25th, at Mount Ranch Town Hall, we will be having a meeting regarding a tree, county tree mortality program, as well as PG&E will be represented as well to talk about their tree program and Fire Safe Council. So if you have one of our ride-of-entries from the county or PG&E and you have questions, please show up and ask your questions. I'm happy to answer them on Thursday, the 25th, Mount Ranch Town Hall. Thank you.
I have an announcement. I received the following letter from the Amador County Board of Supervisors. It's dated October 9, 2018. It says, "Regarding Letter of Appreciation for Assistance Provided by Calaveras County Staff for the Amador County Veteran Service Office. Dear Chairman Toffanelli and the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, the Amador County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend its sincere gratitude and appreciation for the prompt action taken by your veteran service officer to assist Amador County when our veteran service officer had a medical emergency and was unable to open our office. Shelley Barrett acted promptly to establish credentials and access to the Amador system and was planning to operate our VSO office one day a week when our VSO was unable to return to work. At the time, we had been uncertain how long our office would be closed, and we appreciate the assistance and action taken to offer some continuity of service to the Amador County veterans in this situation. We certainly appreciate having such good neighbors and the good working relationships between our counties. If there is anything that Amador County can do to assist Calaveras County in any manner, we stand ready to do so. Signed by Supervisor Lynn Morgan, Chair of Amador County Board of Supervisors." So, great job. Is there any staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. Madam Clerk.
Recognition and acknowledgements. Item one is from the library, "To Proclaim the Week of October 21 through 27, 2018 as National Friends of the Library Week in Calaveras County."
Normally, I delegate these proclamations. However, I'll be reading this one because I've been an actual member of the branch of Friends of the Library for many, many years. And it's a great organization. All branches of it, including the main branch, do a lot of work with the county libraries, as Nancy will tell you. So I will read from the proclamation. "Proclaim the Week of October 21st through 27, 2018 as National Friends of the Library Week in Calaveras County. Whereas, Friends of the Calaveras County Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing resources for programming, materials, and equipment, enabling us to expand children's services through additional staff, annually support and promote summer reading, and help with other special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends continuously highlights the fact that our library system is a cornerstone of our community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure, and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages: access to print, digital and electronic materials, assistance in research, help with personal technology questions, readers advisory in children's services and programs. And whereas, the Friends' gift of their time, commitment, and money to the library sets an example for all and how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community." So Nancy, want to say a few words?
I'm Nancy Giddens, the Calaveras County Librarian and the beneficiary of all the wonderful work that the Friends do. The Friends of the Calaveras County Library began their work in our county in 1962. Since then, they've raised literally millions of dollars and used this money to make our library better. Their generosity enabled us to build our beautiful Central Library in San Andreas. Over the years, they've given money for the purchase of thousands of books, public computers, furniture, and other equipment for all of our library sites. In the past three years, they've allowed our patrons to have access to eBooks by paying for our overdrive membership. They received donations for the upgrading of our children's area in San Andreas and for improving children's, services to children's system-wide. They've helped us to avoid cutting hours in branches by paying staff and have given money for extra hire positions. This year, they're supporting our STEAM employee to work with older children throughout our library system. They've helped us to have an ongoing storytime in all locations and supported special holiday events and summer reading. There's no way to count the number of hours given by Friends over the 54 years they have been serving our county. To say that we would not be where we are today without their help is no exaggeration. Thank you for honoring them today with this proclamation."
Any board comments? Supervisor Mills, you have a comment?
And to your point, the community outreach portion of what the volunteers do is a critical element, and I know that there are people in the audience that understand that. And if people are not aware, take the time to find out what the library offers, and there's so many ways it can offer help and assistance to people and understanding. So thank you, Nancy, for doing this.
And I must add that the number of years I've been involved, which is well over a decade, the volunteerism involved here, it's all volunteers and the number of volunteers, and I can speak personally to my board, we always have abundance of people. I think right now, we have 13 people on just our board and other volunteers that give time to the library and spend the time there behind the desk weekly. So it's a great organization that does wonders, and I think the community truly understands the benefit of a library in their communities and the benefit of the volunteers that do the work and put on the fundraisers and where the money goes back into your library. So that being said, we'll open up for public comment. Any public comments on this issue?
I'd make sure nobody, I'm going to hand it to somebody else, House of the Taxpayer The library, Nancy was a guest for our taxpayer alert program a while back, and there's a 30-minute explanation of what she's doing, which is really good. It's probably one of the best things that the public can access, to learn about the library. And you can do that by Googling YouTube and the library or her name, and it's a really good thing to watch. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Mary Cole, I'm from the Outreach Committee of the Friends of the Library. I'm staff there, does the newsletter and help with membership. And I just want to point out that on the 25th, Thursday of that week, all the branches from 1 to 3 will be having a special celebration for all the members to come and be thanked for being a member, and all the non-members to come and join and learn more about the Friends. So any branch, all the branches are doing it from 1 to 3. Come and get some treats and goodies in a goodie bag and learn about the Friends. Thank you.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I would like to step from the norm, and I would like to make the motion for this item. So I will make the motion. I would move this item.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, a second by Supervisor Clapp. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Passes 5-0. Come on up, Nancy.
There you go, there you go, there you go. Good, good. Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Public comments.
Good morning. Terry McBride, District 2. I have a real concern of how the supervisor board is pushing away public comment. You're now having your closed meetings in the afternoon, so that means people that have any concern have to wait all day, remembering, of course, that many of us are working folk. I have something I want to speak of on your raises for people who don't deserve it, but I can't because that's on later, and I have a commitment in a couple hours whether I'll be here or not, where if that was allowed for folks that needed to come in and talk at 9 o'clock, they'd be allowed to. Once again, you're allowing for public comment, which is really what's supposed to guide you in your job. So I'm wishing, I'm hoping, and I am asking and as a voter, pretty much demanding, that you start accepting public comment on a better basis. You already cut it down to three minutes. It shouldn't be like that. Most people don't take more than a couple of minutes. The five minutes was fine. And don't look away. And so I want to really request and demand as a voter in this county and a taxpayer in many ways, that you really open up and allow the public to be a part of it. The closed sessions should be in the morning, as they used to be, and instead of us having to wait around and see what everything went, because a lot of people cannot spend the entire day. And then also just allowing for when folks cannot stay for that agenda item, can go ahead and slip in their comments. You can note it down. It's not that hard. It's called a pencil and piece of paper, and you can just write it down right next to what that agenda item is, and so that you can take into consideration their thoughts. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Members of the Board. My name is Gregory Clark. I live in Council District 1, and I have a property next to my house that has not had the brush cleared for four years. I went to code compliance, and they said that they are not responsible to the public to address this matter, that I might try the fire district. So I went to the fire district, and they said they are not responsible to the public for this matter, and directed me back to code compliance. I gather that there is no code compliance regarding addressing the owners of property to maintain their property in a safe manner. This property has been overgrown for four years, and the owners are absentee, and I don't know what to do. So I'm asking you to promulgate regulation for code compliance to address the owners of property who are not maintaining their property. I came from Los Angeles, where the fire department did have this responsibility. And if a property owner did not clear their property, they were, the property was cleared, and the cost was added to their property tax. So there is existing means, and I requested the board please promulgate rules and regulations to address this. Thank you.
Other public comments? Three minutes.
Good morning. Neil McEwen, District 4. Like to acknowledge that this is Freedom from Bullying Week, and I know that Clyde's campaign has been conducting a whisper campaign and posting on the Internet accusations that are completely unfounded, that Mr. Stoppard is in some way associated with cartels from Mexico, and I'd like to see some proof of that because there is none. And sending out disinformation like that is really a cheap way of running a campaign. It's dirty. And, I mean, Clyde, we know that you, your record is real. There are specific case numbers going back to 69. 12250, assault with a deadly weapon. 14512, sale of marijuana. 73368, disturbance. And the list goes on. And I think it's all available for anyone to see. And I've been trying to get a point across, the point across, that you were sleeping during the budget meeting, during the September 11th meeting, at 2 hours and 54 minutes and 9 seconds. If you look at the video, you were clearly asleep, right there at the dais. And there's been no acknowledgement of this, no censure. You're allowed to curse however you like. I mean, Mike, you can tell on the video that you saw him. And I think the budget is very important, probably the most important thing that you guys have to take care of, and that's how you respect the process, is by falling asleep? I think there needs to be some accountability. There needs to be some recognition. You should at very least have to go back and watch the video, as you have in the past, been forced to do because you've not been paying attention while you've been up there. So I just would hope that somehow there's some accountability here. Have a good day.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, that will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any board member wish to pull a consent item?
Mr. Chair, number six, please.
Number six. Any other board member? Any staff member? Any member of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back and entertain the motion for a ballot.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number seven also.
Seven also? Okay, so I am six and seven, having pulled. I'm looking for remainder, which is 2, 3, 4, 5, and 8.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the ballots.
A motion by Supervisor Mills.
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. Any other comments from board? If not, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Passes 5-0. Supervisor Olivera, you pulled item number six. Madam Clerk, can we please read?
I want the record to reflect that I did not interrupt, Board Clerk.
Okay.
I'll write that down. Okay, so item six is from the Sheriff's Office, "To Adopt a Resolution Approving Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Agreement Between the City of Angels and the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office."
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you. Captain, welcome. Thank you for coming by, Sheriff. I'll make this quick. Is this going to be a long-term contract, or we have any idea how long this is going to take? I know we have some manpower issues with Angels Camp.
The term of the contract is set to expire in July of 2019. However, the City of Angels anticipates staff returning earlier than that, so hopefully we're going to scale it down as the contract moves on. We specifically put it out to July to give us some extra time in case the city needed it.
Excellent. And we have sufficient staffing to handle that, plus our own requirements, correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Captain. That's all I have.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on. No comments? Any public comments on this item? Seeing, no? Melissa?
Melissa Ead, City Administrator with the City of Angels Camp, and on behalf of the city, I would just like to thank the Sheriff's Department, Captain Macedo, and the sheriff for their help and support during this transition. So thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Mills. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Passes 5-0. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Item seven is from Human Resources, "To Adopt a Resolution Approving a Side-Letter Agreement with Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association for Correctional Staff K-9 Pay."
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, could I ask you a question or two about this program?
Absolutely. So I'm here for you, Mike.
This is the first I've heard about this. Could you tell us basically what the program entails?
Well, we had, one of our dogs that was out on the street is a marijuana dog, and as we know, marijuana is now legal out on the streets. So the dog, there was going to be some legal issues if the dog found some methamphetamine. They've already had problems in the world of California that if the dog hits on something else and there's marijuana in the car because it's legal, it causes a problem. Marijuana is still illegal in our jails, so we have transferred that dog over to work in our jails. That's what it's all about. And we had an MOU with the DSA for the K-9 pay, so we need to have that MOU with the correctional staff now.
So with the dog in the correctional facility, it has a new handler?
Yes.
Okay, so the retraining and things of that sort covers?
Correct.
This MOU?
Correct.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any public questions, comments? Not on this item? Okay, close that public and bring it back for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Olivera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Garamendi. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Passes 5-0. Moving on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I was looking through this last night, and I was thinking, is there any opportunity to change number, to switch the order of nine for 10? Because in reading this, if we don't do 10, we don't need to do nine. So if we did it sequentially, we may or may not have an issue on number 10. I mean, excuse me, number nine. So what I'm saying is, we're changing, we're talking about changing the pay for the Board of Supervisors on number nine, and we're only really doing that, as I understand it, because of item 10, because it's connected to the pay raise for our elected officials. So if we don't increase the pay to elected officials, we don't have to do number nine right now. We could have a longer, more robust conversation about item nine, Board of Supervisors pay. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, but I think the reason not only for changing this regulation, item number nine, is even going into the future, whether today we give out raises or not, it's going to affect any time they have a COLA raise or anything else. So I think the idea was to change it from what has happened in the past and going into the future. So I don't think item 10 has any effect if we do item nine. It's not going to have any effect on it, on our decision, other than the fact that we don't approve it, then it will be affected on item number 10.
Right, exactly.
But going into the future, whether we do today or not, if we don't change item nine now, we'd have to bring it back in the future or whatever, so.
Right, I'm totally on board with that. I know we've discussed that. It's just I'd like to have a, you know, we're presented with a sort of up or down on number nine, and there are options that we as a board haven't discussed yet, which I suppose we could discuss under number nine, but it was just my suggestion.
Why don't we take, we'll take a poll. How's that?
That's fine.
Take poll the board.
Sure.
Supervisor Clapp, you want to do nine or 10 first?
Go with Jeff.
Supervisor Mills?
That's fine.
Supervisor Olivera?
I concur with Supervisor Garamendi.
So there we have it.
Thanks.
We are going to do item number 10 first.
Item 10 is from Human Resources, "To the Introduction and Waiver of Reading Requirement for an Ordinance Approving Equity Increases for the Elected Positions of Auditor Controller, Assessor, Clerk Recorder, and Treasurer-Tax Collector."
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. So I am bringing before you today the introduction and waiver of the reading of requirement for an ordinance approving equity increases for the elected positions of auditor controller, assessor, clerk recorder, and treasurer-tax collector. So the board, as you remember, asked HR to bring this back to you with the increases that was recommended by Human Resources, and those increases would bring a, so the first increase that was recommended that would go into effect immediately upon board adoption, would bring a $5.01 increase to the auditor controller, a $2.90 increase to the assessor, a $2.36 increase to the clerk recorder, and treasurer-tax collector. The second increase, which would be effective the first pay period in 2019, would bring the same increases to those positions. They would also receive a COLA in the first pay period in January, and so it would bring new hourly rates to those positions of $6,402 for the auditor controller, $5,971 for the assessor, $5,861 for the clerk recorder, and $5,861 for the treasurer-tax collector, which collectively would be a 21%, a 13%, and 11% increase for those positions.
Board comments, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Olivera.
Ms. Hawkins, instead of doing hourly rates, can you give us numbers as far as annual salaries? The increases, what they are existing now and what the projected increase would be?
And so right now, for the auditor controller and the amounts that I have are actually all in, so this is including PERS, their benefits, everything.
Okay.
So for the auditor controller, $1,62,696, and these are the original amounts.
$162,000, is that what you're saying?
Right, but this includes, this is all in. This includes PERS, everything.
This is what the county has to pay for that position, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And with the suggested increase, the suggested board-approved increase, it would be $178,718, an increase of $16,022.05.
And that was for what position?
And this is for the auditor controller.
$178,000 and change.
Yes. And it's an increase of $16,022.05.
Excuse me. The $16,000, is that... I'm sorry, Mike.
Go ahead.
The $16,000, that's for per year, that's just not for the remainder of this year, right? This fiscal year?
That would be the annual...
That's an annual...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Let me correct that. That would be the... That would be the remainder... No, the annual increase to the general fund. So, that would be an annual increase of $16,000.
So, for the remainder of the year when this takes effect, if it is approved by this board, it would be less than the 16, or the nine, or the seven that we have here on our narrative? Because we're not going back to July 1st. I see auditor controller, $16,022.05.
Right.
Assessor, $9,000. That's annual. So, if we approve this, we're not going back to July 1st. We're going from this day forward. So, it would be less than those amounts for this fiscal year.
So, I do believe without having the whole spreadsheet in front of me, that is actually the breakdown of what's left in the fiscal year.
These numbers?
Yes.
So, that's not...
That's not the full load...
And so, that's not...
Starting July 1st, 2019.
I mean, we're already over a quarter deep into this fiscal year.
And we're past the first quarter.
So, what is the total impact to the budget?
So, let me...
Because this is kind of a little bit misleading if it's...
Ms. Hawkins, if we took a break, maybe you could get that information?
Yes. If you gave me a 10-minute break, I could get that information verified.
All right. We'll take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Chair?
We'll take a 10-minute break.
Okay, thank you.[754.23]
Judy?
Okay, I apologize for that. And those amounts were for the remainder of the fiscal year. That was a fiscal amount and not annual amount. And so the amount, the new annual amount, and this would be, like I said, includes all PERS, county-paid medical, all in, would be 191, 195 for the assessor, sorry, auditor, 181, 133 for the assessor, 176, oh nineteen for the treasurer tax collector, and 174, four fourteen for the clerk recorder. Now, the annual, just strictly the annual amounts, with not including longevity, not including benefits, anything, just figuring the hourly rate at the new rates for these positions, for the auditor would be 133, 161, assessor 124, 196, treasurer tax collector 121, nine oh eight, and that would be the same for the clerk recorder. Those would be the amounts that we would be recruiting at if, or not recruiting, but those that would be running for office, those would be the wages that would be advertised.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins, can you kind of educate us a little bit? Where does the sheriff come into this program? Is he involved in this program? Is his salary based on these four elected positions?
No, it is not.
I was under the impression they were. Is the sheriff's salary negotiated separately?
If I could add, I think you might be thinking about which would be item number nine, which is the board's compensation is currently laid out. That's where the calculation of the sheriff's salary comes into play.
Okay.
In this case, this item is specifically only looking at the four elected officials identified. To answer your question, the board sets the sheriff's salary separate as well.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. I wasn't mistaken.
So, any questions?
I'm done with my question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, your lights on?
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. You gave us this sheet, but what I asked for was what is the total aggregate increase to the budget? So, when you gave us, on the memo, it says forty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars altogether, and then you said that was for the remainder of the year. So, what is the total increase to the budget?
So, for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, that's the total cost to the budget.
I would like to know the twelve-month period. So, when I look at this, I'm trying to compare apples and oranges here, so, apples and apples, excuse me. Just over a twelve-month period, what does the increase add up to? So, an annual compensation.
The forty, the forty thousand is for three-quarters of the year?
Yes.
So, if you, if you take that, you're looking at probably about around sixty, fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars total.
Annually.
About, but...
I would say fifty-five thousand, about fifteen thousand quarterly, based on this, forty thousand pre-quarterly.
And to Supervisor Oliver's point, the sheriff has not asked for a raise?
No, and in our, when we were reviewing the salaries, his, his salary was closely in line with comparables.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, the column, the total employee cost, that is the number of dollars the county pays out in compensation and benefits for these positions.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And for the auditor, that total is one ninety-one, one ninety-five, is that correct?
Yes.
And for the assessor, it's one eighty-one, one thirty-three.
Correct.
For the tax collector is one seventy-eight, oh nineteen, hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
And for the clerk, it's a hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yes, and this is including longevity as well.
I understand, but that's the money the county pays out for that position.
That will be for a full year with all the increases.
Full year, with the increases. With the increases.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, do we have a number? After stating those numbers, do we have a number of what the existing compensation is, including benefits and longevity and salary?
So, currently, we are paying for the, so, the full year, no. I have what the rest of the, the current year is, or what eighteen, nineteen will be, but I don't have what the, the full year.
Well, if we're going to compare apples and apples, should we have that number and see what that total increase is?
Um, yes.
How long would that take?
Just a few minutes.
Mr. Chair?
If I may, I have a calculation here I can provide it to you for what was budgeted for this year. I think that'll speed things up a little bit. I don't have it as a printout because it's calculated on my screen, but I think it will answer your questions.
Mr. Lutz, I trust your honesty. You can go ahead and tell us.
So, the amount budgeted this year, and so total compensation for the auditor, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five thirty-four, for the assessor. And bear in mind, differences here relate primarily to PERS calculation, which can vary a little bit based on age and time of entry into the system, and more importantly, health insurance option. The county pays different amounts based on what the individual employee elects to enroll in. So, there's an amount for an employee only, a different amount for employee plus another person, and yet again, a different amount for employee and family.
Yeah, but it still boils down, Mr. Lutz, to what the county pays.
Yes, I just wanted to caveat that when the numbers are different between these positions, it's primarily for those two factors.
I understand.
So, the total compensation then for the assessor, one fifty-one, six six two, for the treasurer, one fifty-four, six fourteen, and for the clerk, one sixty-three, two ninety.
I'm assuming that Mr., Supervisor Guerra Mendy's figuring the differences on that. Am I correct, sir?
You are correct.
Thank you. Saves me the trouble.
The total, the total compensation increase then is just the difference between what we're paying now, I'm using the total employee costs versus the projected employee costs is about ninety-two thousand dollars here, not fifty-five. So, you were, but you were looking at the wages when you did that, fifty-five? And I'm looking at the total, is that correct, Tim?
Yes, you are.
That's correct.
Okay, so, we're talking about ninety-two thousand dollar increase to our general fund in aggregate total costs. I guess that's repetitive aggregate total.
Well, with splitting, and then with splitting out the difference of, when it's the change of start, and are you talking about for next, for a full year?
I'm looking, I'm looking, right. I want to know what people are getting paid. I don't like, want to look at what they're getting paid three-quarters of the year or something like that. We're trying to take a look at this over a period of time. So, it's ninety-two thousand dollars to, and how will we pay for this, Mr. Lutz? Is this in our contingency? Is this budgeted?
This would be general fund on an ongoing basis. This year, we had built this into the budget. If the board were to not approve it, it would come back as fund balance at, at year end via salary savings, yeah. So, this year, it was anticipated, although again, that doesn't mean that it's approved and it would just come back as, as salary savings. On an ongoing basis, it would be general fund.
Thank you. Ninety-two thousand.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on? You have questions, comments?
Yeah, the question would be, the numbers that you quoted, see, Lutz, is, those are the all-in budget numbers.
That's correct. Those are the all-in budget numbers that...
For this year.
For this year.
Okay.
Any other board questions? If not, we'll open up the public comment. Any public comments on the side?
House, Segala, Taxpayer Association. One thing, our group really appreciates the work of the auditor controller and also our assessor. Over the last ten years, we've seen a number of cases where they went to bat for the taxpayer, sometimes in opposition to board policy or board wishes. The fact that they're elected could be a real blessing to the public and to the taxpayers because they cannot be fired by the board. They, the board cannot determine what they do. They're responsible to the public. This is really a good thing. And as a taxpayer, we want all, everybody that works for the county to receive an amount of money that is sufficient to attract and keep good people. Doesn't make any difference whether they're elective or, or employees. If by various processes, that amount is exceeded, then that amount above that amount that's needed is really a gift of public funds. And so, we want to avoid a gift of public funds. It seems like the best way to set, to set the compensation for elected officials is when they, when you're going to offer the position for people to, to run, run for office. So, that amount of money is kind of like a contract that they, when they run for office, they agree to. Now, if the term is four years, there has to be some adjustment, I realize that, but when a person is in office, to then seek additional compensation, it seemed like that would be okay because maybe that's what the office is now worth, but probably it should start at the end of the term, you know, not, not right away, to be fair to the taxpayer. In this case, it, it's really hard to, to be fair because apparently there are, there's problems in setting this amount of money, and so, our group would probably go along with what, what you do. But in the future, we recommend that these amounts be set before term of office. Thank you.
Terry McBride, District Two. At the Angels Camp debate, Clyde Clapp mentioned that when he came here, originally Calvers County was poor. I didn't think we were poor. I grew up here. I thought we were pretty enriched just because we lived here. Apparently, we're not poor anymore because with these wages, are you kidding me? I don't agree with them. And I think what Mr. Segala said is, yes, that's basically a four-year contract. When you come in and that's what your pay is, that's the pay that you should get. You shouldn't get these hu- huge raises. There is a price that you pay for living in our little county. There is a price that you pay for living in our little county, and that is you don't make the kind of money that you do down in the Bay Area. That is a fact. And it's a price many of us pay willingly because we love it here. We love that we're friends, that we are, that we are there for each other, that we have amazing community events and that type of thing. We don't expect to make these kinds of dollars. And when you have been having all of your departments take 5% cuts, I believe, and now you're going to give this kind of a raise, holy smokes. And do any of you got back bookkeeping background? I already know Jack and Mike aren't too tickled about this, so again, I'm not talking to them. It's you three, bookkeeping, pluses and minuses. And again, I'm going to ask you, why are you trying to drive this county bankrupt? There's no denying it. And then when I hear, oh, well, there is only, there's these one-time expenses. That's what's hurting us because, you know, you just took away a huge economy base when you kicked out the cannabis people, the good guys, and kept, I mean, still have the bad guys. But, you know, you kicked out this huge amount of money that offered some great potential for this county. But we have these one-time expenses. Well, you know what? Every year, you're going to have one-time expenses, just like a homeowner. One year, it's the roof. The next year, it's the water heater. Another year, you got to paint the house. There's always one-time expenses. You can't just say, well, the budget will be okay because we have these one-time expenses. They're going to keep coming back. But more than anything, these numbers are unreal. I don't know. I guess you're going to make like the Fed and start printing money out of error because that's what you're going to have to do. And, or keep continuing raising our property taxes, which are insane, driving the local folk out of here because they've had it. My time's already started. Thank you. Cynthia Sanchez, D2. When I speak at this podium, I speak facts. We, the taxpayers, asked the question, why is a salary increase even being considered for the assessor? On August 21st, she was asked by Michael Olivera, how far behind are you in your department? She answered 6,000 transfers. These are the facts. On February 23rd of this year, after requesting a meeting three months prior, the public, all Butte Fire victims, met with the assessor to discuss their increase in property taxes, an increase in 16 to 65%, while some properties decreased. How is that inconsistency possible? Various excuses of computer glitch, timid employee, recession are exactly that, excuses. She said she had authorized, she had authorization to hire three additional people for her department. She chose not to. In attendance at this meeting were Jack Guerra Mendy and Frank Bigelow's rep, Dana Jorgensen. Dana offered to the assessor at no cost to the county to have a state rep help with the backlog in her department. She answered, no, you have to ask why. Then she told us, the public, you do not want the Board of Equalization to find out about this property increase because they will make you pay the full amount. Then stated that she is here to protect us. Then immediately turned to the reporter from the Calaveras Enterprise, pointed her finger at him and said, this is off the record. On March 9th, the assessor wrote an article in the Calaveras Enterprise titled "A Clarification." She states, "A computer glitch is not the only reason for increases in value last year. It is not even the main reason. It is because we had not reviewed values in 2016. When the Butte Fire erupted in 2015, we had a significant backlog and suddenly had much more work. Our focus was on helping those affected property owners by reducing their taxes due to the fire damage. That effort meant that we had not time for the annual review in 2016. So the 2017 assessments was a two-year period. When I met with the owners, I forgot that piece of the puzzle, and they focused on a computer glitch. That's because this is what she told us. It's in the Calaveras Enterprise. There were 13 people at that meeting. Her backlog was prior to 2015. You, as the board, have to hold department heads accountable for their actions. A backlog of 6,000 transfers is unacceptable, lost revenue for the county, and therefore does not justify to be re-awarded with an astronomical salary increase, which would have a negative impact on the budget. This is the reason why Central Calaveras Fire is asking for a 130% increase to the people in D2."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. So I just handed everybody some graphical infra-data representations about Calaveras compared to the U.S. because the Board of Supes, when talking about almost every policy decision you make, uses lateral comparisons to neighboring counties, other counties, and even municipalities who have virtually nothing in common with us. And those seem to be nice about it, kind of silly. And so I'm going to, you really messed with me when you switched the agenda today. I had my comments structured carefully to go from nine leading into 10 because I'm going to use both comments on the same topic because they're closely related. Anyhow, so you'll have voted on this one before I even finish talking about it, oh, well. So just to go through this real briefly. First, first graph, people in poverty, Calaveras versus U.S. Calaveras, about three times the number of people in poverty compared to the national average. People that didn't work, about a third higher than the national average. People that didn't work change in percentage points. Calaveras outpaced the U.S. in unemployment by three times. Rental units and percentage of total housing. Calaveras has the higher share of mobile homes, lower share of rental units. Change in median, median income value, Calaveras dropped at five times the national average. Now granted, median income is really misleading. I wish it was an average, not a median, but I don't have that figure handy. People with disabilities in this county, we have about one and two-thirds times as many as the national average. And people with less than a high school education, Calaveras outpaced the U.S. You know, we have 25% blah, 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 people with less than a high school education. We, no, never mind. We win on that one. Oh, but the change in people with less than a high school diploma in the period measured 2010 to 16, Calaveras did six times worse than the national average on that metric. And then people in receiving SSI, we lead the nation. Well, we, we beat the nation. And receiving cash public assistance, we outdid the national average. And the one place in those that we scored better than the U.S. overall was food stamps, and that's that.
Other public comments?
What I'm going to say is to not disrespect the, the people that are supposedly going to get a raise. They are very adept at what they do, and I have a lot of respect for that adeptness. However, the Butte Fire victims have not gone away. They're still here. I know a lot of them have moved out of, just, they had to. But there are others that are trying to, to be able to stay in Calaveras County and survive. Some people here are living on this than some of these increases in salary per person. I find that amazing. One lady I talked to that's almost 80 said that her taxes went up $300 per year in one year. And, you know, for an 80-year-old person that has fixed income or, or less, then that's, that's a really weird way to fund people's salary increases. So I've said it. I don't agree with it. You know, it's, it's just like one lady said, astronomical. And I, again, do not disrespect the people and their abilities, but as a whole, if we don't take care of all of us, then we're all going to lose.
Other public comments? Seeing none, we close public comments and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Thank you, Chair. So I ran down the numbers and I am under the thought that the numbers that were presented on this piece of paper would indicate all-in budget for next year. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So when you run down that total for those four departments, that's 722,761. The all-in budget for this year is 632,100. So I did it two ways and still came out with the same increase of 90,661. Now, if you look at that over a 10-year period, that's a million, nearly a million dollars of additional costs. So I'm, I'm really having some difficulty. If we were just to pare this down to a straight across the board 11% increase, we'd still be over a half million dollars in 10 years of increased costs to the county and to the taxpayers. I would be more willing to discuss an 11% across the board than I would be willing to discuss adding $28,661 to a position this year and every year going forward over what it is now. When we run for these offices, we knew how much the pay rate was. And to me, it really wasn't that important, but to some people it is. So I would, if we were going to do this, I would also like to see that the contract would start at the end of the current term, whatever the term is, for each one of these departments so that we can, essence, have some idea of what it is going forward. And that's my comments.
Can I get clarification on one point?
Certainly.
Contract, do you mean the, you're saying you would like to see it start at the beginning of whatever the next term is?
The next term in office.
Okay.
Next term in office.
With 11% increase across the board here?
In other words, we have them right now sitting at
21.
21, 13, 11, and 11, rather than do that, to just go straight 11. With the first increase, second increase, as we had talked about it, but to clearly understand that in a 10-year cycle, this is still going to be about 600,000 of additional costs to the taxpayers for these four positions. So that's, that's a lot, lot to do, a lot to think about. And if, if we are even contemplating that the economy is going to continue to roar as it is, that's very short-sighted. I think that we need to be looking down the road to say, if we give these kind of increases and then we're forced to stick to it and we can't walk them back, what happens if we do see a downturn? Are they going to be working with less staff simply because they're, they're, the department heads themselves are paid more? So that's just another side of the coin to think about.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with Supervisor Mills on some aspects of his statement. But I feel the 11% is high, and I would look towards 4%, maybe 5, to keep in parity with what we've offered our employees. Although the salary range is geared by $163,000, $154,151, and $162, I'm sorry, I just cannot buy into that. I would, I am not for this at all.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy?
Thank you. Sierra Lutz, do we, we have a, did the, did these four positions receive any raise this year?
Do you want to speak, I mean, outside of COLAs and-
Including COLAs.
They received, the COLA in July, and they will receive the 2% COLA in January.
Okay, so they're getting a 4% raise this year?
Yes. And the COLA, the 2% is included in that 21 and in the, the total percentage in there.
Thank you.
So they have, or will have, by the end of this fiscal year, during the course of the year, receive a 4% raise due to COLA?
Yes.
That was negotiated with SEIU and the other, we, we put that in as we normally do for electeds and
Yes.
non-representatives. So there isn't a 4% increase. And the 4% increase for all four of these positions, again, we're going to ask you a question about total. What is the 4% total reflected in general funds for those increases?
So the 4%, I do not have calculated out separately. I did not anticipate you would ask for the 4%. It is calculated into their current totals because that was a increase that they would have already received. And so that is in their current totals for fiscal year 18, 19.
So your numbers that you threw out?
The numbers that I said included, because it's a January 1, it would have been half year of that additional 2% COLA. That's correct.
And, and actually, it actually works out to a little bit more than 4% because you gave them a 2% increase in July. And then you'll give them a 2% increase based on that, whatever that adjusted figure is. So it comes out to more than 4% during the year increase. And we don't have those numbers exactly what that increase represents. And these numbers that you presented here, that have the hourly figures here to the new rate on 1519, say for the auditor controller, 6402, that would include the July COLA?
Right, and so for the auditor controller, so the first increase would be 501, the second 501, and then the 2% COLA would be $1.26.
Yeah, yes. Supervisor Mills?
That's interesting you bring that up because when we were doing discounting rates in, in the corporate, we're talking about a 10, 10, and 2 or something like that. So you take off the first 10, by the time you take the second 10, you've already discounted that part. So it just keeps, there's a multiplier involved here that we really don't know. We'd have to sit here with a calculator and multiply them out. But to Supervisor Olivera's point, 4% would be 25,284. If you give them a, if there's a 4% COLA going into this already mixed in, and you add another 4%, it's another quarter of a million dollars over 10 years. I just want us to understand, you know, the level of that compensation package that we're committing future boards to beyond our own. And, and I think we need to be somewhat cautious. So I, I agree, even the 11% after you look at it may seem a little high. And so I would, I would definitely like to have some negotiation on, on what that percentage number would be and where the board would be comfortable.
Do we have any other board comments? Do we have any board motions?
I, I would have a comment. I can remember a budget, budget time we were doing the sheriff's budget, the top five, the two, the three lieutenants at that time. We have four now, and the two sheriffs, I mean, the two captains was basically a million dollars a year for, we were paying for those unelected officials. I would make a motion to raise it 10%. Uh, I would make a motion to raise it 10%, counting the 4% in it, starting, uh, January of 2019.
You would, we would have the COLAs, keep the COLAs, and additional 10%?
So otherwise, they're getting 4% now, so they get 6% on top of that, which would make a total package of 10%.
Total package?
Yes, counting the 4% they're getting right now.
We don't really need to discuss the COLA, that's already discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the COLA's already in there.
So if you want to
So he wants to give a 6% raise, basically what
Across the board.
Across the board.
That's more than what we gave the unions. Would you go to 5?
Six.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor, starting January 1st?
Yes.
2019, starting January. Do we have a second to that motion? We do not have a second, so it dies. Is there any other conversation or motion?
Well, let's try to go to, uh, 4% as, as an increase here across the board, and whether that would be acceptable. So I'll make a motion to increase all four positions 4% for the year.
Is that effective January?
Effective January 1st. Thank you.
Hello, 5. Meet you that time.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to 5.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have, and that would be, January 1st, 2019, a 4% increase, 5%?
5%.
Across the board.
Counsel? Yes, I would just clarify, because of all of these changes, this is, this is an introduction and waiver, first reading of an ordinance. So this would be essentially direction to staff to bring back and reintroduce an ordinance based on the terms that you're recommending. Um, one thing that I would also recommend that I'm noticing here, I am encouraging all departments that bring ordinances forward to codify them, so they are in the county code, rather, so it's easier to track, easier to follow, uh, rather than having an uncodified ordinance. So if, I would recommend that if the board is bringing this back with these new terms, that, um, that the direction also be to put it in the county code.
Appreciate your comment.
Supervisor Olivera?
Question before the vote. In our negotiations with our bargaining units, was COLA part of those raised numbers as far as the 5%? Did it include a 3% or 2% COLA?
We gave equity increases, and then we also gave COLAs.
So the package of, say, our 5% increase for our, our employees, that would be a 5% equity plus 2% or 3% plus 2?
And so we had different, uh, it was different with different bargaining units, but for SEIU, for example, um, they, certain positions received a 5% equity, and then they received a 2% COLA and 2% COLA, so a total of 4% COLA.
And was that done with the other bargaining units also? The same formula, but I understand a different amount?
COLA was structured a little bit different, and then with their equity, some received two equities, and of course, DSA received a total of, I believe, 17% in equity, but they also gave back hers.
Okay. Thank you.
Which, is that the basis for your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is that it would be consistent with the rest of the employees in the county as far as equity increases?
That is correct.
So can I please clarify that the motion we're discussing is to raise 5% for all four, effective January 1st, 2019? That stands correct.
And that would be the direction to staff?
Thank you.
I'm considering comments at this time, and considering, um
Chair, I do want to state that I appreciate, you know, the contemplation and the thought process that has to go behind this kind of discussion, because it does impact us in sometimes many other ways. We need to think about those as well.
Would you, would you consider, um, changing your motion to reflect, um, a 3% increase in January, and then another 2% increase
In July of 2019?
In 2019.
To give us some balance?
Give us some balance here?
Yes.
Yeah, I would.
Yes, I would.
You, you would consider that, so you would
3% January, 2% July of 2019.
Yes. Um, I think that would fall in line with, um
What we've done with other bargaining units, et cetera.
Correct.
I would agree.
Um, so if you would wish to withdraw your motion and change it?
I will withdraw the initial motion and change it to a 3% in January and a 2% in July of 2019.
And I would second that, Steve.
You would, okay, withdraw your second, second that one?
Yes.
Supervisor Garamendi, your light came on.
So I just want to be clear, so by passing this motion, it comes back to us
Yes.
To do this all again?
Yes.
As a, as a written document?
As the actual ordinance. Supervisor Olivera?
No, Mr. Chair, and at that time, we can revisit this and, if needed, renegotiate?
It'll be back on the board's agenda, so, for our consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Chair, if this comes, come to a vote, I would request a roll call vote.
Okay. It's going to come to a vote, we have a motion and a second, so, so, um, we, a roll call vote has been requested. Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
Reluctantly, yes.
Supervisor Garamendi?
No.
And I'm a yes. So we have a 4-1, to have staff prepare that and bring it back. Okay? And we will take a 10-minute break.
Thanks.[1039.13]
All right, we're back in session. We're going to go on to item number nine. Madam Clerk.
Item nine is from the Administrative Office to repeal ordinance number 2890 and 2908, which are the current uncodified ordinances that set the compensation and benefits of members of the Board of Supervisors. Introduction and waiver of the reading requirement for an ordinance adding section 2.04.030 to the county code, reestablishing the compensation and benefits consistent with the level of compensation and benefits that existed on January 1, 2018, for the members of the Board of Supervisors, and authorize the publication of a summary of the ordinance.
Board comments, questions?
That's right. Sorry. I'm just going to... Yes. So this item is, as stated with the recommendation, a repeal and recommended replace. As we discussed a couple months ago, and said that we would be bringing this back, we identified an uncodified ordinance that established a compensation for the Board of Supervisors. That compensation was based on 50% of the average of the salaries of the assessor, the auditor controller, the clerk recorder, the sheriff, and the treasurer tax collector. So that was what set the board member base hourly salary. The ordinance also specified that the board chair receives an additional $1,000 per month serving in that capacity. In addition to that ordinance tying the board salaries to those specific elected officials, there was some ambiguity written into it on what that $1,000 per month meant, whether it would factor into the hourly salary, or whether it would be a strict stipend, the difference being on what would be considered perceval or not perceval. That really created some confusion and uncertainty on which methodology should be applied. So what we're doing in this instance, or what is being recommended here that the board consider, is to repeal that ordinance and then establish a new ordinance that would, in addition to defining what the hourly rate is of each of the board members, it would -- and that hourly rate, I should say, is based on what the board has been paid historically the beginning of this calendar year. And I differentiate that because of the board specifically requested to not receive the COLA increases that other employees received earlier in the year. So when we set up the hourly amounts, we based it off of what the board was paid the beginning of this calendar year. And it also would convert that $1,000 per month stipend into an hourly rate that would be paid to the board chair, or whoever would be serving in that chair capacity. So the board member salary would be $2707 per hour, and the board chair would be $3284 per hour. Now, this is a recommendation of basically doing status quo. If the board wishes today, obviously, we could do as we're doing with the elected officials, bring something else back for a replacement ordinance that may be contemplate something different for the board salaries. This was our opportunity to at least present a baseline to facilitate discussion and recommendations if the board would like it further amended.
Supervisor Garamendi, your lights on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I think we have talked about this briefly before at this board, and this is one of those rare things that Clyde and I actually agreed on. I think I marked it on my calendar. I hope you did.
We read on the TLT, too.
We did. There's two. So what I wanted to suggest is, you know, one of the things we spoke about was the awkwardness of we, as a board, setting our own salaries. There's always a political loss and a personal loss when we do this. We're either going to not do it, in which case we end up, like, twallamy and having to do big catch-ups, or we're going to do it and there's going to be political heat for doing that, and it's all understandable. So I don't know if there are any ideas or examples out there that we take this out of our hands, either put it to a citizens committee, like the legislature does, or tack it to a -- other counties use judges as things attack it to. But, you know, we're facing this as a board right now, but the next board, and the next board, and the next board are going to be in the same spot. And it's just not going to get any easier, especially when you're in a twallamy situation doing a big catch-up. So I was hoping that we could, you know, skip through this ordinance and not miss this opportunity to maybe fix a long-term problem that we have. And I don't have the answer to it. I want to see if anybody's open to discussing it.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm definitely open to discussion. I think how to determine this in the future should be a critical element to whatever decision we make, because we're going to saddle future boards with how this is done, and then they may have to tangle with it again, and that won't be pretty either. So I agree on that point. I'm having a problem with retroactively putting this back to January 2018. The reason is, is that I want to ensure that everybody clearly understands that you cannot retroactively reduce pay rates. Now, if it's a pay rate increase, that's one thing, but a pay rate decrease, I'm telling you, there's federal laws all over the place on it. So if we're going to set a date to start, it has to be, in my world, the date we approve it, and not so much talking about what happened in the past. Thirdly, the idea of establishing this as a hourly rate for salaried employees puts us in another predicament, because when you talk about hourly rates, you're talking about time cards. And we're not paid by the hours that we work, even though we know we work way more hours than minimum wage would permit. But at the same time, I would just as soon keep this as a flat salary number rather than convert it into an hourly number, because there's no reason for us to even be in that mode. That would include any other elected official or other people who are in a salary position. We're not paying them, we're not accounting for their hours, we're not paying them for the hours they work, we're paying them for a job that they perform. And so this is just the way it's been in my working world, in my career, so I just bring it up in that way. Why I know about retroreductions is I was a beneficiary of a mistake that occurred literally over years. And at some point, those that realized that they may have been short-changed because of how things were written here may be able to come back in the future and ask for that compensation to be made whole. Now, I'm concerned about that, because that, again, would be something like what happened in Twallamy County, where you're going to take a hit. And I would like to know if we are going to take a hit based upon what we may have undercompensated in the past. I'd like to know what that is as part of this discussion, too, if it's going to be part of that discussion, so we can fully understand. The other part, too, is the benefit change, which is number C, I think, in the listing. The contribution's increasing. I've never been a fan of health insurance compensations, et cetera. I didn't take it at CCWD. I'm kind of reluctantly taking it now. It just doesn't make sense to increase that benefit.
Which benefit?
That's in item C, benefits, county contribution toward health insurance will increase to the amounts as follows.
Can I clarify on...
Yes, sir.
We made that consistent with, and that's actually what the board has been paid out now. We increased it based on what was written in the old uncodified ordinance that was adopted in 2008. So those numbers have changed over time, but this is consistent with across-the-board salaries, or across-the-board health benefits, correct, Judy? We don't -- there isn't one bargaining unit that gets paid more in terms of this is just health, not necessarily vision or dental.
So the county contribution toward health is the same for all bargaining units and unrepresented?
So as healthcare...
And electeds, sorry.
Thank you, Judy. So as healthcare costs increase, likewise, there's a proportional change in the county's contribution to those costs?
No. And so we pay a flat rate toward our health contribution, and so we don't pay a percentage. And so as healthcare goes up, then that, when we -- if it's a negotiated item, and then we do negotiate an increase in what our health contribution is, that's something that is the board approves and then is brought to the board.
Thank you. I just want to ensure that we are not going to be taking advantage and being given something that the employees aren't given, that we're -- if we're going to be in a framework, that we're in that same series of rules that they operate under, and not anything special, different, or more.
Particularly on something like health benefits, our payroll system already can be complicated enough with the number of assignment pays and education incentives, longevities. One of the reasons we've tried to keep certain areas consistent is it makes it more complicated to administer the payroll system.
I would leave the discussion right there for now, and maybe we can pick this up after public comment. Thank you.
Supervisor Garamendi, your lights still on?
I'm sorry.
Supervisor Oliver, no comments at this time?
No, we reserve comment after public comment.
Okay. So we'll open up the public comment. Any public comment on this item?
House of Gallo Taxpayer Association, there's some really good ideas going here. We think that going back to the basic principle of having compensation besuch that would attract good people and keep them. If we keep going back to that, then we can stay out of trouble and avoid making a gift of public funds. So in the case of salaries for supervisors, it shouldn't be an hourly salary. You're not working on a time clock, you're not being paid overtime. It's an annual salary, and that's the way it should be reported. To do otherwise would be confusing what the position is. Apparently, the present salary is sufficient to attract good people. I count five there, so it's successful. Whether that would be true in the future, or whether the salary would be important to future people that would run and run for office, that should be determined. As far as the supervisors setting salary or recommending salary changes, that could be done by the grand jury. You could ask the grand jury to make recommendations for changes or what the salary supervisors would be, and then you decide to accept their recommendation or not. But that way, it would take it away from possible conflict of interest. So with the exception of COLAs, it would seem like you would maintain your present compensation, starting -- and then starting perhaps January. If you think that there should be an adjustment, turn it over to the grand jury to make recommendations prior to January, and then if there's going to be increases or decreases, that can be determined at that time. So COLAs would be okay, and then otherwise, keep the salaries, present salaries. Thank you.
Other public comments?
I respect all you guys for what you do. I wouldn't do it for any price. And -- but you are our leaders, and I hope -- I don't see anything wrong with you picking your own salary, but I think it should be in line with what goes on with the rest of the county employees, including the elected. And I think that that's a good measuring point, and it's a good -- it gives you the opportunity to be a leader, a real leader, a respected leader. And so that's where I sit. Thanks.
I find myself in partial agreement with a rare group of people today, from Mr. Segal at, and Mrs. Gordo, to Supervisor Mills, and you, Supervisor Garamendi.
Stop.
On the Supervisor Mills front, yeah, I really like striking from the whole discussion the hourly wages, and I've wondered about that, how your wages were calculated, because you're always doing it in hourly. I'm wondering, so every time that you create a special meeting, are you getting extra pay for that? And I, you know, I'm glad to hear that's not the way it works. But to your point, Supervisor Garamendi and Ms. Gordo, the reason that I brought you that printout of those economic comparisons is it seems as a public -- to avoid a conflict of interest, we'd want to create a congruence of interest. And in my mind, that would be your interest and my interest become one and the same. And you might pick some kind of a benchmark to tie your salaries to. It seems odd that our elected officials be getting salary increases while the population that you're supposed to be creating opportunity for are all suffering decreases. So the more your salary is tied to my salary, the more you're liable to promote my interest. And I just want to throw that idea out there, is to tie your salaries to some benchmark or indicator of your actual performance in serving the public, who's paying your salaries. Seems reasonable to me. So that's it for that. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Board. Trevor Witke, District 2. My primary question is just, what was the rationale historically for why the salaries between the supervisors and the four electeds, or however many electeds, were tied? What was the actual rationale for that? Was there a rationale, was there not? I think that that would be helpful, just so that we understand why this was done in the past and why it should be changed now. And yeah, that's really all I have. I would like to know what the rationale for tying those two salaries, or those different salary groups together, was historically. Okay, bye.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board.
On that last question, unfortunately, most of us not having the history here to know necessarily what the board at the time had in mind for tying it to those specific positions, I can't really answer that. I have seen other counties that have tied their supervisor salaries to a -- whether it's all elected officials all elected officials or a, a, you know, mixing of them. That's one method that I've, I've seen. As Supervisor Garimendi mentioned, a number of counties tie it to a judge, being that the board doesn't have control over what a, you know, a judge gets paid. Therefore, it's considered less, you know, they obviously don't have the ability to influence it, so it would remove them from doing that and it would move with, with the courts. Others, I've seen where they just do it as this board's potentially contemplating, which is the board itself sets the salary, and never an easy discussion for sure.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Yeah, that was kind of an interesting comment about performance base.
About the what?
About being performance-based. And I know that many of the supervisors, there's times where you've had 12-hour days, it just goes with the territory. I know Amador is tied to the judges. Many counties have different methodologies. I would be interested to know what those methodologies that are currently in place in other counties are, and how they're determining their pay rates. I think it's, there's just a piece of the puzzle here. Because we do need to answer that question about how we're going to determine this in the future. If we do it right, and we do it well, then other boards won't, won't be having to face the fate, so to speak, of dealing with this again. So I would, I would like to be sure that we have all of the information in front of us before we move forward with any kind of decision on it. The other thing too is, is that if you look across the other boards in Calaveras County, union public doesn't get paid for meetings, they don't get paid to go anywhere. CCWD is $120 a meeting, and then they, they have six meetings maximum per year, per month, and their, their medical's paid if they want it. They do pay their expenses to travel from their home to meeting locations within the county, that's something we don't do. But there's many of these boards that they, they serve for nothing, literally no pay at all, just even to show up, no gas expenses or recipients or anything. So I don't say that that's the total answer, but there, there has to be some understanding of what other boards in the county are also providing as incentives to sit on their boards. And their boards are full, so it isn't an obvious that it's all finance. There has to be other reasons and other motivations. So I just want that to be included in the discussion, to know how many other boards are out there that literally pay nothing for you to sit on them.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Thank you. I, I think these are really good points, and I appreciate the public input. I think, you know, I, I've spoken to a lot of other supervisors, and I've asked some of the guys who are, and gals who are most senior in our profession, how they've dealt with this over the time. And two of one, they say this is an awkward conversation for a lot of reasons. The ones who feel successful took the route of joining their salaries to their superior court judges. They said that was a horribly painful Band-Aid to rip off. But they also said that it opened up opportunities for other people who may not have outside businesses, or may not be retired, to join their board. And I think that we need to really take a look in the future. And she said something earlier that I think is a really good point. And that is, you know, if you push things out, then it's not going to be us doing something for ourselves, but rather doing something for the next group of supervisors, whoever they may be, that's their seated. So one of the ideas, I was just thinking while we were talking to Dennis, was if we decided to take that route, taking it out of our hands and tying it to superior court judges, but we made it start in something like January 2021, every single person on the board will have been new or re-elected. So we're avoiding the situation that you pointed out earlier with our elected officials, and this solves the next board's problem. And if, and if we really screw it up, take a blame it all on us. So that sort of, we're not giving ourselves, but this, but it is something we have to take on. Because I, I have talked to other people in talking about running for office, and, you know, if they're very good at their trade, or they're, they're got office, they're taking a pay cut to do this. And we don't want that. We want the best people we can appear. That doesn't mean we need to pay exorbitant amounts of money. But as you point out, this is not a 40-hour-a-week job. It is a seven-day-a-week job. And if there was an eighth day, I'm sure we'd take that too. So I don't know how we want to take this on, gentlemen, but, you know, I think we have to really look at the horizon on this one and try to do it correctly.
I'd like to add into that discussion while we're there, is, is that another way to help would be to ensure that the expenses that are incurred in traveling around your district, within the county, those things which you do on a daily basis.
Sure.
You're, you're putting the gas in your vehicle to do that. You're, it's not the time. It's, it's all of those other ancillary expenses that are occurred, and because we say you got to get beyond the boundary of the county to get reimbursed, is that really, does that make sense? If you were adequately compensated for your time to travel from Palma to West Point, you know, you'd be incentivized to want to do that simply because it's not additional cost out of your pocket to do it. You are doing it to the benefit of the, of the taxpayers of this county. So therefore, I think we need to have also another, a complete look at the expense, but look at the package as a whole. And say, if this is your only job, do I want to take money out of my pocket to do this? Or do I want to be sure that I am being compensated for all of the work that I'm performing on behalf of the residents in my district? I spend a lot of time in Conparables with what I do, and it, sometimes it'd be twice a day. So when you add all of those trips up, that's, that's uncompensated things that I'm doing on behalf of my constituents, and you do the same thing for yours as well. So I'd like to have a complete discussion on, on the expense side of it, along with the pay rate side of it, so that we look at the whole package. So anybody coming to this position in the future understands what I'm doing for my constituents, I can assure that it's not going to be to a detriment to my family to get it done.
I think that is, Supervisor knows I think you're spot on there, and I, I think that by pushing this effective date out, we're not talking about Dennis or Jack, we're talking about down the road.
Supervisor Olivera, your lights on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Garimendi for stealing my thunder. You guys have hit every point I was going to make. Yeah, I've been looking over my shoulder, Dennis. I have a concern about what's happened in the past when we're changing these ordinances. I know that we've discussed this. County Council, you may want to chime in on this. If we change these ordinances, how does that affect 2890 and 2908 as far as those procedures during that time? I think on this board, I'm the only supervisor that was actually prior, and I want to make sure that we're on legal ground by changing this ordinance. Is there any possibility of claims from other board supervisors under these two ordinances for compensation?
The two existing ordinances are the ordinance that, that are currently in, in place. So this board has the ability to repeal any existing ordinance and put something new in place, which is what is before you today. As far as these two ordinances, what, as this board is aware, they are uncodified, which has been problematic for changing in staff to know exactly what is on the books and what applies to whom. And that is partly why we are recommending that this be codified, so it's in the code, so that the public and anybody else can have easy access to see what it is that the board members are actually receiving. If the board doesn't do anything, I mean, at the end of the day, the, the two ordinances that are uncodified are still the current rules on the books as it relates to board compensation. So if the board does nothing, these ordinances are still alive and well. Staff is recommending that whatever the, the approach is, whether you put it out for the future, a future board, have a different setup for a future board, that whatever, whatever this board decides to clean things up and to make sure that everybody knows what is going on, what things are, that, that it be codified and clarified as far as what is in the two existing ordinances versus what the board would like it to say. Staff wants clarification as to the interpretation of these two ordinances. And that's what we were kind of hoping would, would, we would receive through an ordinance going forward. Does that answer your question?
Partly. So we wouldn't have to entertain any claims under these ordinances if we enact a new ordinance from prior board members, if there is an adjustment required, plus or negative.
Well, keep in mind that any change that this board is considering or contemplating right now would be prospective, so it would be moving forward.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on that point. And thank you Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Garimendi for stating those positions, and I agree with your positions.
All right, I have a little bit different take on this. What we do today, or we do have staff bring back, doesn't prevent, prevent any future boards from bringing the ordinance back and putting their own tone into it. So what we're talking about in the future is really something that five years from now, or four years from now, there's a different board, and another board member comes in, takes a poll and says, Chair, I'd like to take a poll on this ordinance, and if we want to bring it back, and the poll says yes, bring it back, then that board can bring it back and revisit the ordinances, whether we set today or in the future, that goes for any ordinance that's, that's on the books. We can bring it back, or that board can bring it back. So trying to set something and make it correct for the future may sound good today, but you don't know where we're going to be five years, the county is going to be, or that board in the future, five years from now, or even four or 10 years from now, is what different circumstances are going to be. He was asked here at the podium by, in public comment, about what went into this ordinance, and what was the thinking behind it. I was not here in 2006. A lot of things you do come to the board, I do have some history on. I think this board at this time had some conversation with some prior board members. They were trying to do, they felt the compensation for a supervisor, as the department heads that are elected have more on the table and work here every single day. They come here every single day, and they put in a tremendous amount of hours, that the true compensation, or the just compensation in their mind at that time, when they put this ordinance together, was that the board should put those together and take 50% of, of their salaries, and that would be a just compensation for board members at that time. Whether it involves some of the things that Supervisor Mills is talking about, and Supervisor Garimendi is talking about, I don't think they factored into it. And myself, I don't factor into it either, as far as getting compensation for traveling from here to San, from San Andreas to my home, or to other areas of my district. I think the compensation, when I came into office, of what I get covers that. And no further compensation unless I'm required to move or go outside the county. I don't even claim that. I gave up all of my travel expenses to meet the 5%, so I have none. I didn't even use them last year, and the prior years before I did not use them. Because I think when I took this job, the compensation was the compensation that was at the time I knew was. It's like if, if most of the people, or a lot of the people that live here have to drive to Sacramento or Stockton to their full-time job, they're not getting compensated from their home to Stockton or Sacramento to start their job. They're getting compensated when they start their job. My guys, if our job is in Sacramento, they get in their car and they drive to Sacramento to their job. They don't get a compensation. The only time they get compensation is when it's outside of 100-mile radius, and they have to spend the night. I give them a hotel room and, and some compensation for their meals. But that reflects going outside of the county. I, I think we're getting into things that I, I just can't see as being part of the compensation as a, as a supervisor. Yes, we work many hours, and some, you can say seven days a week, yeah, but you can also say it's probably 20 of 24 hours a day. Many of us have gone into the night, nine, 10 o'clock at night, working on reading, either for prep for the board, or a phone call from a constituent, or what have you. So it, it's a diverse amount of time that we spend doing this job, but that is what this job entails, and you knew that when you took this job. I, I don't think that we should be looking at other forms of compensation other than what's in front of us now. It just does not seem right to me. I also have some other comments, not dealing specifically with that, but dealing with the ordinances that, that were being asked to replace. And I know all of us had been, had a conversation, we were given a phone call, and we were asked to meet with HR, County Council, Auditor Controller, and the CAO, go over our individual salaries over the course of the last two years. I was a little bit taken back by how it was approached, and I got to tell you, I, I'm a little bit disappointed in the fact that somebody from HR contacted me about each one of you, and it wasn't the HR Director, it wasn't the CAO, it wasn't the Auditor Controller, it was a, a staff person telling me that I had to be at a meeting concerning my compensation. I was then given the letter, and I'm sure you all were given the same letter, that, and it, it says, Honorable Gary Toffenelli, in the month of July 2018, an analysis was done regarding the compensation of the board and the elected officials, and determined as to how they were related. Upon that review, I found two ordinances that dated back to August of 2006, ordinance 2890, and December 2006, ordinance 2908. The August 2006 ordinance stated that the board chair will receive $1,000 per month for additional responsibilities. And the December 2006 ordinance set the board member compensation at 50% of the average salary of the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, assessor, clerk recorder, and the sheriff. Two errors were identified that demonstrated that both ordinances were not being followed. And it goes on to say, the board's chair $1,000 monthly allocation had been incorrectly converted to an hourly amount and added to the board member rate, whereby all subsequent COLAs increased that rate, causing the $1,000 to be increased equally to the COLA. The rest of the, the net result is that the board chair is currently being compensated in excess of the ordinance allowed for additional duties. And so when I had this meeting, I specifically asked very first for a copy of the ordinances that they were quoting here. And I was given a copy. And I'm a little bit confused on where that came from, what they're saying in this letter. And I, I'm not looking at it as, as compensation for myself as the chair, because during that compensation, we were told that either we owed money, and we would have to pay it back, or we were going to be given more compensation because we weren't compensated enough. And I had a problem with that, because I was being told that we need to have a vote of the board on whether we would accept any COLAs or increases in our annual salaries or not, when it, when it comes up to some of the contracts and comes around the time for when COLAs are going to be done, or whatever. And historically, members of this board have said at this diocese during public meetings, and said that they would not accept a raise to their compensation. And in my opinion, when, when elected official sits at the diocese and says he will not accept any compensation increase, that that holds true. He does not have to take a vote on it with other board members, because it's his personal salary, and he's making that public comment in public. And, and so I, I And so, I think that's up to the auditor controller, HR, whoever, to keep track of whether a board member is taking an increase or not. That's just part of the job. And historically, many members of this board has not taken compensation, especially going back to 2009, 10, 11, when we were experiencing the recession. It was, we continuously did not. Even some members even said that they would like to donate that money to specific, any increase to specific organizations, or back to a certain department in the county. And that held true. So, what I was being told in this meeting, I had some exceptions to. And I still say, if I stand, if I sit here and tell you I do not want any compensation increases, then that holds true. The other part of this is, when I got the ordinance, and again, it's going back to my increases, but it's going back to, there is a member on this board that's being asked to pay back money, and I don't think that is just at all. And the reason why, when I read this ordinance, it specifically states in this ordinance, specifically, and how this word came in this letter, I do not know, and I will read what the ordinance specifically says. Compensation: A 3.5% cost of living adjustment commencing in the first pay period after the effective date of this ordinance. An additional 4% cost of living adjustment commencing on December 1, 2006. The 4% will be distributed consistent with union determinations between wages and health insurance contributions, subject to limitations set forth in the MOU. If the union does not specify a determination by the deadline date, the board will receive a full 4% cost of living adjustment. It also say, it says in the next sentence. Further, the board chair will receive $1,000 per month, and that will be tied and adjusted to any and all future cost of living adjustments for additional responsibilities. So, it specifically says, specifically, calls out that $1,000, and specifically says, tied and adjusted to any and all future cost of living adjustments. So, to go back and say that you were only entitled $1,000, and you received more than that because it was tied to an hourly wage, and it increased with colas, it was supposed to. It was supposed to get increases over that. And it was up to the board chair at the time to say, "I do not accept any of the increases," then he would not be accepting any of the increases that it's specifically calling out for in this ordinance. And that's the ordinance that is 2890, that was being referenced here. So, I feel that what was being said in that meeting needs, because of some supervisors being given some increases, it needs to be transparent and out here, and on a public meeting, brought up. I brought it up. I do not, I sat here in January this year and said I would not accept any increases of any colas, and I stand firm by that. I knew my compensation when I was elected. I do my job. I travel. I know what I'm being compensated for, and I'm looking at it as, through my history of work in the private industry, and knowing that the average Joe that we represent here put us in this office, and how they are compensated, and I'm talking about the guy that goes to work every day and does an hourly job, no matter what job that is, and what his compensations are, should reflect on us as members of the board, because that is the public that we represent, and the public that put us in here. And to expect me to get mileage to drive from my house to San Andreas, or my house to West Point, or my house to Copper, that's built in on that salary. And that's where I'm at on this ordinance going forward, which before us is asking us to change what was in this ordinance, which is fine, if that's what the board wants to do. And it ties us to an hourly salary. I'm in agreement, it should not be an hourly salary, because we're not punching a time card. We work so many different hours, and so many hours. So, it should be tied to a salary, whatever the compensation is that this board agrees to at this time. I'm in favor of that, but the rest of it, I don't think we're tying a future board into anything that they don't want to be tied into. That's simply up to them, just like we're bringing it forward right now to us, and having an opportunity to change it. So, those are my comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you very much for stepping up and relating the information from those meetings. I was actually contacted, same fashion and manner you were. I was brought in with, to this meeting, and ladies and gentlemen, I was the supervisor that was required to pay back money. And that was a result of my being the chair for 2017. I was informed that the $500 additional compensation for the chair was figured in properly, and I had to return $508 that I was overpaid for being the chair for 2017. I commend you, Mr. Topfenneli, for bringing that up. That's why I was concerned about the statute of limitations regarding those two particular ordinances. And I'm not thoroughly convinced that we don't have a problem with that. All due respect, counsel. I was informed that the statute of limitations on federal law was one year at that meeting. After researching that, California state labor laws could be three to four years. It's a very confusing situation. $508 is not going to break me. But we have to fix this somehow. Thank you.
Supervisor Mills, your life's on.
Thank you. Compensation, when this board discussed the idea and said very clearly they did not want an increase, that was from that point going forward. But compensation, as HR says, and I'm not going to speak for Judy here, is based upon existing rules. In other words, your calculations are based upon the rules that are in place at the time that the obligation occurred. It does not base itself on the future. The future's not involved here. This board decides at some point in time to say, "We're going to change how this all is figured." We have that option to do that. But what happened before that, you have a clear guideline and a clear set of rules that you have to follow in how that compensation package is derived.
Right. And I think the reason that the auditor brought this forward and brought it up is because the pay prior to when the board stated that they did not want the colas that was presented was, when she found that ordinance, we discovered, when we did the calculations, that the pay was not correct, that it was, that the board was being underpaid. So, that's where a correction, normally, any employee that we find is being underpaid for whatever reason, something that was missed in the MOU, or they should have received a step increase, whatever, we would go back and then correct the pay to the timeframe that we're required to. And so, that's what was being presented.
So, let's not call us a board member at this point. Let's just call us an employee. And as an employee, if we were, in essence, undercompensated by the rules which you have now in place, and that you're aware of, it isn't a matter of whether or not we choose to accept that. It's a matter that if we want to give it away to somebody else, we certainly can, but the obligation to you is to make the books correct. That's the final obligation here. And as former chair, Mr. Olivera stated, you know, this can go back several years. And why I know that, as I've said before, I was a party to the same situation in a corporate environment. So, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Where the difference is in the corporate environment, and where we are, is that a local agency does not fall under California wage and hour rules. And so, that's where we differ. And then, the second difference is a board member is not an employee, and so you don't fall under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And so, there's, that's where there's a big difference there in the federal laws. And so, you do fall under different statutes.
So, if the board chooses not to take future increases from that point, that is what is done. Board compensation, though, is set by a majority vote, not by what an individual board member desires on behalf of themselves. We can't, we can't determine individually what we want to do. It is by a consensus of this board that this is the package which will be done for anybody who's on the board.
Well, and it is my understanding from county councils, we had an ordinance that set salary. We did not have the correct salary, and so to correct that, like we would normally do, this was the procedure that the auditor set forth.
And I don't disagree. Because a board member chooses not to take an increase in compensation, doesn't mean that that position doesn't go forward with that. So, if he, the new person coming in, if he doesn't get reelected or run, would be set at that upper echelon of compensation.
Correct.
So, you keep track of that. That's not what I'm saying, is, in case you were misunderstanding what I was representing. I was talking about my personal salary, not the position itself. If the colas come, and it's in the ordinance for the colas, then that cola is tied to that position. It's up to me personally whether I accept it or not. If I don't accept it, it doesn't withhold from the person coming in after me. So, that's, that's...
But my confusion is, is whether or not you have the ability to not accept it, or whether you must accept it, and then if you desire to do something else, whether you certainly can. But for the staff to keep track of each one of us on different rules that we want to operate by, doesn't make sense.
Well, it's being done in a lot of different places. I can tell you that. Different employees have different compensation, but the salary itself is a base salary. Many ironworkers get paid above, different levels above what the base compensation is, and it's all part of bookkeeping, is to keep track of all of that. I mean, it's done, I know it's done, and we've done it. So, I mean, you're set at a minimum, and we're not covered by that, as you said. Our rules are a little bit different, but, I don't know. But that's open for conversation here, and whatever the majority of the board wants to go, I've stated my position on it. I certainly understand not wanting to go to an hourly wage. I don't think being transferred into an hourly wage is something that is adequately, like public had brought up, how many hours you turn in, any excess of 40 hours, you get paid overtime?
Can I just clarify?
I was going to clarify.
It's always been set up as the hourly wage for the purposes of the payroll system. I agree with you, it's inaccurate to say you're getting paid by the hour, because, like you say, you're getting paid whether you come to this meeting or not, or all the weekend hours that you put in are not reflected, and it's for the purposes of payroll to derive what would be an annual salary. And that's certainly something we could put in there, in the ordinance, to say the, you know, total annual salary is X.
I'll tell you, if it was an hourly, that previously $162,000 would be very small if we turned in our hours that we worked for compensation. We would be well above that, so...
Well, I would want to ask the board if they would forego, if there's a request to pay back in the case of one supervisor, that we would forego that. And to just, whatever needs to be done to make this entire situation whole is really what needs to be done.
Well, what we can do is, we can start here and have staff bring back whatever we determine, and we can start from there and make everybody whole. And then, if, in the future, if there's a cola that's going to be given to the board, I guess individual supervisor can make an announcement at the public, so the public's aware of it, and then go make arrangements with Judy or Rebecca Callen on how to deal with that amount of money if they don't want that increase, where it can go, and what they can do with it, or what have you. Say, if it's a 2% increase, and that works out to $112 in the pay period, then take $112 of a pay period out of my check and put it in animal control services, or whatever. We can certainly do that, and that way, everything stays level going forward. But to try and go back two years when this board came on, at least four members of us came on, two years, which is what they tried to do, and say that we're going to make those adjustments, when clearly for two years, I've said I did not want any increases, and try and say the board chair was overpaid, I totally disagree, that's not, I disagree with what's being said with that. When I read the ordinance, it specifically say it's tied to the colas, and it asks somebody to pay back money that's specifically in there, I'll have to disagree. So, it's up to you guys and what you want to do. I'm open for any more comments, or motion, something to give staff direction on.
I'd like, just a question, why, when you read in about the chair getting the $1,000, how it goes, it made perfectly sense how you read it. So, how did staff come up with something different from what you read?
I don't know. I wasn't told. I didn't get an explanation, other than it was only supposed to be a flat $1,000, period, and it doesn't say that. It doesn't say a flat, period.
I would add to it, and unfortunately, the auditor controller isn't here to also speak to this. This was also brought up as that ordinance was shared with PERS, and CalPERS interpretation of it was along similar lines as the $1,000. And specifically because it was written out as a stipend to call out the $1,000, as opposed to call out a new hourly rate such as, you know, the $32. I agree, which is why I made the comment in the beginning, that it's poorly worded and open to interpretation, and we've had agencies now outside of just the county weighing in that their interpretation of it was the $1,000.
Well, the board certainly can fix that, and we can make it spelled out specifically $1,000, or we can make it $1,100, we can make it $1,200, we can make it $500, we can make whatever we want to make it, and spell it out specifically. But to go back and try and say, "No, it wasn't right," and have people pay back money, I just don't see that, and I'm not one that's paying back money. I don't see that as being fair and just. I think the board should consider leaving that the way it was, and going forward, it's a clear $1,000 stipend, period, and clarify that, and then clarify if we want to make the salaries a salary instead of an hourly, $58,000, and whatever it was for 63, or whatever it was for the chair, spell that out in the ordinance, and we can go forward from there. And it can certainly come back, or you can also make a motion and say that it is going to be revisited yearly. And we can look at it yearly and see if there's any just compensation that we can make, increases to board members, and bring it back when salaries come back, or union negotiations come back, and tie it to that if you want. There's certainly many things that we can do here to justify it, because if you just tie it to a certain salary that it is, the future boards are going to have to bring it back if they... going to have to bring it back if they want any increase over time. So we can tie it to any of that, and certainly we can say at that time, as a board as a whole, that we don't want the increases that the COLAs have, we've given to the employees, or we don't want any increases that we have given out, equity increases to employees. Or we can say, okay, we'll accept it. I mean, if you, if you tie it to something like that, it's going to be able to come back in the future, either this board as we go forward, if you tie it to yearly, or if you tie it to contract negotiations with any of the unions.
Let me throw out a motion, and let's see where.
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
We're not done discussing yet, Supervisor Mills. Thank you. Mr. Lutz, what is the compensation for the chair?
As currently interpreted, it would be the 2707 per hour.
No, I.
Sorry.
Give us a monthly figure. Come on.
I would have to calculate it out.
How about the year?
How about $500?
So the annual compensation for the chair, 68,306.
68,306?
That's correct. Now, that does not include, again, I'm trying to keep it straightforward, it does not include health benefits at this point. I'm trying to just compare straight salary to, to salary.
Good. I recall $500 a month.
That was a thousand.
And that's been, that's been paid?
Mm-hmm. That has been paid.
I was also informed that there was a miscalculation by hourly when we arrived at the deficit that I had to pay back.
And to answer the question on what that, if, if that $1,000 were to be adjusted for all the, all the COLAs that occurred with that elected base group over the last, the last, yeah, it would have been at $1,431 today.
Supervisor Garmenti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a really good discussion. This is what we need to do. And there's a lot of different opinions on this. I, I admit that I thought I understood everything until I came in here, and now I'm confused as to, you know, what happened this last spring when we did the COLAs. You know, the majority voted not to accept them. It wasn't a unanimous vote. So what does that mean? Did I, how does this all work out? We've got a lot of questions about back pay and who owes what to where. I was not familiar with that yet. Very good point. I heard it the way you read it. It seems like something we need to unpack, get that piece. And I would love to have, I don't know what Dennis' motion is going to be, but I would love to have some, a, a, a larger set aside time to have a robust conversation on this. I'd love to hear some information about how other counties are doing it. Gary, your point about, you know, other organizations can, they could change it in the future is absolutely true. I'm trying to help them from having to have awkward conversations down the road, and if they don't like it, they could change it. But, you know, this is, this is a, you know, what do we owe current, what do we owe past? Am I not an employee? I know that apparently there's a government code to say that, so what does that mean if I wreck my car on the way to West Point and become permanently injured? Am I eligible for workers' compensation? Those are, these are things that, we have a really lot to take on here, gentlemen. I would, I'll let Dennis make his motion, but it would seem like we're not quite ripe to move ahead.
Going to make a comment. I'd like to poll the board, because I'd like for how we're paying the chair, chair right now, exactly how it was last year, to continue for the rest of this year, and then we look at it next year. But at least keep it, how we've been doing it the same way. That's, I'd like to know what the board feels about that.
Well, let's hear, Supervisor Mills was going to make a motion. He might include some of that in his motion. I don't know. If we can hear his motion first, we'll see what his thinking is. And then if, if we don't have a second or we don't go forward, then we can do that. He may, I don't know. What is your motion, Supervisor Mills?
Thank you. My motion would be to set this entire matter aside, and that we need to have more information. There are a number of pieces here that I don't think we fully understand. We could, I mean, how, how compensation is derived? What, how, what do we do with that $1,000 if that's just a flat stipend, not subject to COLA? You're right, Supervisor Garmenti, and workman's comp, you know, there's just, there's a lot of moving parts here that, that I think we need to be very cautious about and, and thoroughly understand individually where we are before we make that move. If, if this board desired to not take COLA in this last move, that was by a majority vote, and so therefore it stands for all of us, because all of us agree. In other words, the majority of the board agreed to that, so that, that is the, the set compensation. I, I don't see this individual thing. So my motion simply is set the matter aside, requesting more information based upon the conversation we've had today.
So your motion is to table this. In order to table this, would we not need to have some direction to staff on what we would like to see come back for a future conversation when we revisit this?
She's looking at me.
So you can withdraw the item from today's agenda, and that would allow staff to do any kind of work on it. If you table it to a date certain, then you, they can't do anything to it. It comes back exactly as it is. So I know it's semantic, but withdrawing doesn't require a motion. It's just, we're just taking it off the table so that you can, it can be finessed and brought back at a later date.
My goal is, is that based upon all of our conversation that we've had here today, I think it's given staff a, a number of areas to address, and that if we withdraw the item at this point, rather than make any motions or make any decisions, that it allows staff to answer those questions. So when it comes back, it's more of a complete package for us to have a better discussion.
With all due respect, I don't think staff has clear direction on what the board wants coming back to research and bring a recommendation back to this board.
And we still have the problem with chairs still getting, the, the problem is actually an hourly wage or if it's actually a $1,000 stipend. So I'd like to at least find out where we are on that, because instead of just continuing going on something wrong or right or whatever it is, I mean, I'd like to at least know about that one part.
Okay, so, so we'll have a poll on that. Do you want the, the staff to bring that back?
I'd like it to stay the way it is right now till the end of the year, till you're, till they pick a new chairperson. I think at that time, we should have it settled at that point.
Okay.
But right now, I'd like to keep it as is.
Okay.
That would be a flat $1,000 stipend, no COLA till the end of the year.
Exactly how it's been paid out now.
Exactly. No changes.
And so Supervisor Olivera, you agreeing with that?
I would agree with that.
Supervisor Garmenti?
I would agree with that, but I want to, you know, we need to sort out what this exactly is about. I'm sorry. I agree, we need to sort out exactly what this is about. I, I think we ought to, while we're getting that sorted out, we could hold it in bands, trying to collect money out of past chairs and future chairs. Let's just pause it, get it right. Because I'm not feeling that, and I'm happy, we're happy, probably give lots of direction to staff.
I, I would, I would agree with Supervisor Garmenti on that. And that was part of the reason I brought this up. I don't think it's right to demand money and go back, especially when the ordinance says what it says. But that being said, we, we want to withdraw this motion, this item, have staff bring it back. Do you have recommendations that you would like to see, Supervisor Mills?
I would like to look at.
Questions answered.
Questions answered would be, I would like to look at how other counties have figured their compensation packages and those increases to the compensation packages, as well as how they're calculating their stipends for the chair, or whether it is a stipend at all, or whether it's just a, a number that they've worked to, which includes then a And what date? Do we want this to be something that's reviewable every two years? Or do we want this to be, because every two years you do see new board members, so it's reviewable after January 1 of 2021, 2023, et cetera, so that the new board knows that they have an opportunity to review it as they come in?
Review their compensation.
Review their compensation. If we set that as part of the policy that we're asking for going forward, then it's not something that's going to surprise somebody because it's been in place since '06 and nobody knew about it.
That was my point here.
Okay. But I think it also has to, to look, to my point, at the entire compensation package rather than just this hourly piece. It has to look at the benefits, it has to look at all of the expenses, because if we're going to entice younger people who are going to have this as a job for four years, it's going to be a job for them if they, if they have to quit working to do it. We're not going to bring young people in here to want to.
Younger people.
Sorry, we're all gray hairs.
I'm a baby, and I'm close on 50, gentlemen.
Okay.
We're all getting old.
But to your point is, is that if you want the younger people to be involved, it has to be something to where they're not taking away from their family to do it. Now, we can afford to do it because we're retired, but that doesn't mean everybody's going to be in that position. And I want that, that expense package or all benefits, every piece of this to be subject to review by this board at this point. It might be something the next board will say, forget it, throw it all out. But at least I think we need to have that complete conversation about all of the pieces that make this position what it is.
I, I agree. I would only add that, you know, probably for the sake of having an open and honest conversation, if we set a start date, if we change things significantly to the 20, January 2021, then it's all an election away for everybody at this table. And, and, and I think that that's a little bit better, that way you're not voting it directly into your pocket. But I do, I agree with you, Dennis. I think we need to take a look at how we get other people into this. You know, where, if you don't have an office, where do you start, where do you start your day for work? And if you're an employee, it's usually a calculation that we always do at the university for people with home offices. How does this all work? Why am I not an employee? I'm sure there's a very good reason for all of these things to figure out. And, and I would like to have staff answer this, and we need to set aside a good block of time, have this conversation.
Put it on the calendar, we agree.
That's three of my, it's a little star on the calendar. I'll hold it up.
All right, so any further directions to staff?
Could I ask for one clarification point? I know we're, I'm holding off on any collections. The question that I would have then, if we are not withdrawing the ordinance based on, beyond just today's COLA, there would need to be adjustments to the board's base pay at some point. Is the board asking us to also hold that in, in review until a decision's made?
You say that whole thing, Ed.
Yeah, so, again, going back to, this last COLA isn't the only one that this board or prior boards have declined to take. And so if we, if we go with the assumption that we can just have this board say they don't want this most recent COLA, and that we submit that in writing to the auditor's office, which fulfills her requirements, then there might be other COLAs that would impact the board's pay or what they should be paid. Do we make the board whole up to that point, not knowing necessarily what prior board members said about take it, don't take it? My concern is being in compliance with the ordinance that's on the books.
That is the goal, is to be in compliance with those ordinances on the books until such time as those ordinances are changed, or this board has given a direction to change a piece of them. So if we decided in Jan, what, this last budget year, or whenever we decided to say we're not taking the COLA at that point, this board made a clear direction, from that point going forward, that is what stands. If, if it's from that point retroactive, you can't take that away. We can't change that. That's, that's an in-place position.
That was my question, is we would need to adjust that.
Mr. Chair, could I recommend that we, we, status quo with what we have right now? Keep it in place until we have our next meeting. I know it's a problem for administration, but once again, we don't have all the information or confused information. I think we should be able to review all that information and make a decision.
And, and, and I would agree with you, and to Supervisor Mills' point about prior COLAs and what prior boards did. Judy, this, this board is, is, is like the electeds and unrepresentatives that we have to bring to this board, any, and give them any COLAs that were negotiated by the unions, and we have to adopt those COLAs and give them out to the elected or give them out to the unrepresentatives. And to that being said, when it came back to the board, those boards denied or didn't take the COLAs. So to go back and say we're going to retroactively give COLAs out and adjustment, we're separate, we're, we're separate. It's not like we're part of the SEIU union or the other unions and we've got to take the COLAs. It comes to us to accept it, much like when we do the COLAs for unelected or the unrepresentatives. It comes to us when we agree to give them those, we would have to agree to give the board itself the COLA. Yes?
I just wanted to clarify, the two ordinances that are on the books are, the, the one that sets it at 50% of the elected's salary. The concern is although the board turned down, you know, prior COLAs, they still gave the COLAs to the elected officials. And so the ordinance says that you receive 50% of the elected official's salary. So unless there is something in writing to either change the language of the ordinance that sets the 50%, or something in writing, whether it be verbal, and I highly recommend that if there's anything verbal done, that it be followed up in writing, so there's a paper trail, so everybody in the future knows what happened, that that can be, that that can be done. And that has not been done. So that is, that is the concern as far as approving COLAs and then not following up with, with verbal and written decline of a COLA, and/or modifying the ordinance to reduce the 50% to whatever percentage the not receiving or not accepting the COLA would be. This is, again, what I had said in the previous item, why we would encourage these ordinances to be codified, so that staff, as there is turnover in staff, as there is turnover on the board, that everybody knows what it, what, what the language of the various ordinance setting compensation is, just so the board is aware. The way that it was drafted as far as being an hourly, the reason it was set that way was just purely for, for payroll purposes. It was a recommendation by the auditor to assist with payroll purposes. And what I would like to get clarification on the existing ordinance as it is, the issue that staff was having, and I was, I was hoping that the auditor would be here to clarify on the PERS piece, is the $1,000, whether the $1,000 is a stipend versus a $1,000, it has historically been added into the hourly rate of, hourly rate that is, that is put into payroll for payroll purposes, and that is, that is not a stipend per se, but, and the amount that is calculated for PERS. And so it's a PERS issue as far as how the board interprets the ordinance on the books. Do you interpret it as a stipend that's $1,000? Or do you interpret it as an adjustment to the base, base rate pay for the chair? And whether that should be included in what is considered PERS-able or not? And the way that it is, is currently laid out, there is concern as to whether PERS would consider it a PERS-able salary, or portion of the salary or not. And that's what staff has wanted, is just clarify, to clean things up, what is the board's intent as it relates to this? The other piece was that the auditor had indicated to me at least, this is a money issue that I'm, but just so the board knows that if, if it's calculated into the hourly rate, thank you, Rebecca, if it's, if it's calculated into the hourly rate, there would be some months where it would be less than $1,000, and there are some, some months where it would be more than $1,000 just based on when the pay period. when the pay period fell on the calendar. I don't know if you want to clarify on that as far as why staff came to the conclusion that we weren't sure as far as a stipend versus PERS-able.
So how it's written, PERS does not view that as pensionable earnings. They view it as a, kind of like a special pay assignment. So it's compensation for purposes of the IRS, for purposes of that you would get it. But as far as PERS is concerned, pensionable activity has very clear rules, what they consider pensionable earnings. So Judy Hawkins actually contacted PERS and went over how it was currently written in the ordinances that we have. And special assignment pay specifically, you can't have a classification of one. It could be where you have special assignment pay that's available to a whole classification and only one person qualifies for that compensation. But the fact that it's available to all of that classification will meet the criteria of pensionable compensation, with the caveat that that is for classic members. There's a lot more leeway on pensionable compensation for classic members than PAPRA. PAPRA members, special assignment pay for all intents and purposes is not pensionable. It just isn't. And so when you're looking at rewriting this, you really just want to have, there's an hourly rate for a board chair, there's an hourly rate for a board member. When you do that, then it's all pensionable because you're not defining some portion of an hourly rate as special compensation. You're just saying, here's what your hourly rate is, and therefore it qualifies. How it's written right now just doesn't meet the terms of pensionable compensation.
Let me throw this out there additionally. It's that when you talk about a 4% COLA, let's say for instance, the way it's written is this 50%, compensation's 50% of the elected. And you have this 4% COLA that comes in. Well, theirs is going up, but you still have this rule that says we have to be 50%. That's part of the problem here.
So then you, so, and that's part of the transparency issue, because basically then you as the board are getting raises unbeknownst to everybody else.
Correct. And so that's why I'm trying to get to is that when we look at how we derive our compensation package or in what method, if we're tying it to those other people who are getting increases and saying we're a percentage of them, we're hiding the fact that we're taking an increase.
So what, you know, and I'm sure Judy's done similar research, but in terms of how boards are compensated, it's all over the board. But we've seen where it just is. The board sets their compensation, they have an open discussion about it, and it is what it is. It's not tied to another group of whatevers. It's, I think a lot of counties have found that it's probably difficult to tie to the judicial branch because then you lose control and you can talk about some really big swings in compensation if you tie it to that.
You mean like Amador County?
Yeah. So, you know, you spend an hour and a half talking about four department heads' compensation and what the long-term impacts of that, any increases would be. And so you have to be mindful of what those long-term impacts would be for board members as well. And when you tie to another group or positions, that's the thing, is you lose that, kind of that sunshine on what the end result's going to be.
Thank you.
To bring back, talking about the judges and Amador County, I had a discussion at my last association meeting regarding how do they tie their board salaries. And yes, it is all over the place. There was very few that was common. And as far as the judges, I had a conversation with Judy Diaz, who is the HR Director with Amador County. A problem that they had for many years is after they tied it to the judges, the judges were having large increases. And so then the board would bring it forward that they would put the increases on hold. And so they were putting them on hold, putting them on hold, then all of a sudden they had to put a large increase forward. So it's the same pains that you're having now in Topeka County. In talking with Ann, a friend, with their HR Director, she said they looked at tying it to the judges and looked at, did a survey and brought a study session before the board on what was the best way to tie their board salaries. And finally, they came to the conclusion that they do just have to bring salaries forward on what other counties are paying the boards and then decide among themselves what the best increase is.
One caveat here on what county council said and what's being discussed here. And going back to when we had a meeting individually, we were told, I have a copy of ordinance 2908 in front of me, and it says under compensation, it says, A, increase the board's salary to 50% of the average between the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, assessor, clerk, recorder, and sheriff, effective the first payroll after the effective date of the ordinance. Doesn't say annually, it just says that's the compensation effective that date. So any COLAs that came forward after that, if the board collectively turned them down, it should not be tied to that. But it doesn't say anywhere in this ordinance that it will be adjusted annually to whatever increases that were given to any of these positions. It says effective this date, period. And county council, I have to ask you, without annually being put in here, how we can go back and tie this to say, oh, we didn't do this and they didn't do that and you didn't take compensation, but now you have to take the compensation. If the board, clearly like this board earlier, voted to not take any COLAs, how can we go back and tie it, and prior boards did not either, when it specifically ties this to that date, 2006, and doesn't say anything about thereafter annually, any increases that would tie it?
I think this is another example of why staff is asking for the board to clarify what it is that you would like. Historically, as you're aware, there's been a complete turnover in staff, complete turnover in the board since this ordinance was adopted back in 2006. And it was my understanding, just from past practice, of what has historically happened is that it's 50%, you know, the intent was that they tie it to these elected officials so that when the elected officials received COLAs or they received a raise or something like that, that the board would not have to come back and address it because of the discussion you were having earlier, that it's not a pleasant conversation to have to talk about your own compensation and giving yourself raises. And so it's my understanding that the way that this has been historically interpreted is that it's 50% of what they're being compensated. It doesn't say, you know, it would be cleaner, clearer for purposes of ongoing interpretation that it say 50% of the average as of this date, which is the amount, if there wasn't an intent for there to be built in increases based on increases of those elected officials. I would just caution the board that if that is, I mean, if the board were to take that interpretation, that your base salary is 50% of the average of the elected officials when this ordinance, when 2908 was passed, that would, I believe that there have been COLAs and increases since 2006.
Voted on by the boards though, at each individual board.
Correct.
Which increases would be, which I was trying to point out earlier, that were separate. If we vote to give us the COLA, then we got the COLA. If we voted not to give us the COLA, then we didn't get the COLA. Much like when something comes forward and we decide not to give the electeds the COLA. We say, no, we're not taking a COLA, and we don't vote to give them the COLA. They don't get the COLA. So I think that's the point that I was trying to make earlier about compensation, as to whether the board agreed to it or not, or an individual agreed to it or not. If the board accepted the COLA, then we've got to go, and we're opening a whole thing, worms here that I think was opened earlier. I think what I would like to see come forward, my direction to staff, would be that we set in a salary, or we can do it hourly wage, to which Rebecca had mentioned that the chair's hourly wage is here because he's chair and the board, the rest of the board is here. So it can go into much easier accounting measures and go into calpers if you're in that program. And then have it come back, either in the ordinance, have it come back and visit it, when we visit, the salaries of all the other employees or elected officials on an annually or semi or biannually or however it's coming back. So it clarifies that clearly. And then the board at that time can make the decision who's ever on that board, whether they're clearly, they can take a vote to clearly say we accept it or we don't accept it and go forward. So there's none of this going back, trying to figure out what's going on here or not going on. And if an individual, like I said earlier, board member decides he didn't individually want to do it, he can go see Judy and fill out a form saying whatever they want to say, that they're not going to accept it. But that would clarify things, would it not?
Right. And I think that that's part of, the problem is that there hasn't been a paper trail of what boards accepted COLAs, what boards haven't, when were COLAs, you know, brought forward. There hasn't been a really clear written paper trail as far as the history that staff has been able to track along the way. And we're trying to, moving forward, have a clear understanding of what the intention is, what the board would like, and have it clear for everyone to know coming into office and for staff coming and going, to know what it is that compensation is set at. The way that it was proposed was hourly for purposes of payroll, but any increase, if it's codified, it would come back to the board, any change, if it's an actual base rate. You would have to amend the code through an ordinance to accept the COLA, which would increase that dollar, that hourly rate amount. So there would be that discussion any time that a COLA was presented, and then it would be a clearer record for purposes of the board accepted it, the board did not accept it. And then, go from there.
Let's just bring it back.
If I could just add one last thing, Mr. Chair, since we're just gathering up stuff for staff to work on. This has been a problem for 12 years in payroll. We need to evaluate. Why has this been a problem for 12 years and we're dealing with it right now? That's something staff can look at as well.
And to ensure it doesn't continue to happen.
And I would just note...
And Megan has brought this up repeatedly. This is what happens when you have uncodified ordinances. When you have an ordinance that comes forward and there is no copy of it in HR, there's no copy of it in my office, there's no copy of it in county council, there's no copy of it in the administrative office. None of you were here in 2006. I wasn't here in 2006. She wasn't here in 2006. They weren't here in 2006. So when you have uncodified ordinances, this is what happens. And so they will basically pull themselves, kind of bubble themselves up to the surface and the stars kind of all align. And all of a sudden, this is what comes out.
So this has been, nobody knew about this?
Nobody knew about it.
Who brought it forward? Who found it?
I think it was our assessor in my meeting.
It was our assessor.
Was she here in 2006?
Working in the assessor's office.
Yeah, working for Randy.
But that had not her role at all.
Well, look.
So she found it.
Clearly the ball was dropped somewhere along the line. We just need to make sure it doesn't happen again. And we need to fix...
Well, that's why, her suggestion, and I completely agree, it's codifying the ordinances. It's making sure that compensation, ordinances or resolutions that come forward do not state 5% above, you know, 5% or 4% or whatever. They say an hourly rate. Because what happened is we were then having to go on these archaeological digs to figure out where's the starting rate. And the starting rate may have been in 2006, it could have been in 1997. And you have to go back and look for every single one of those resolutions. And so if you, you know, if you look at the ordinances or the resolutions that come forward today, there's always a section that says that this rescinds any prior resolution that would be in conflict with that one. And then we don't have to go on these archaeological digs.
No doubt. There's some sloppy, so we'll get it straight now.
Yep.
So we're going to withdraw this item. We gave direction to staff. Any other staff questions that you need?
Just for clarification's sake, do we have a timeline when you, when the board would maybe want to see this come back?
We want to get this clarified before we start January.
Okay. And then the second piece is, based on the discussion here, the discussion that comes back, at this point, I don't think we'll have a clear recommendation because I have set a base salary or provide what other counties are doing for comparison models. So I just want to be clear, we'll have to come back twice. Once for the discussion piece and to get final direction, then once to actually bring it back.
All right. Okay. So now we have a choice. The next item is item number 11. I don't know, we have an estimated time of 10 minutes. If we go to the next item, we go through it, we can then go to lunch and then the only item coming back would be for us to go into closed session. Or we can now go to lunch and then we have to come back and do this item, if it takes 10 minutes, and then go into closed session. So what is the board's choice?
Mr. Chair, can we continue and then we'll go after item 11?
And then when we come back?
Come back, we'll be going into closed session. Let the folks have a little rest. I know Sam's out here.
Can I clarify that we would have number 11 and we would have supervisor announcements?
Yeah, we can go through that. So we want to continue and just go through this real quick. Okay, we have item number 11.
Item number 11 is from the administrative office. One, exempt the purchase of postage from any competitive selection process and authorize departments to make purchases up to whatever amounts are available within their existing budgets. Two, ratify purchases made to E+ totaling $64,701 to date for the current fiscal year for the purchase of network equipment such as routers, switches, security devices, and wireless access. Three, authorize the county to piggyback on the following agreements. NASPO agreements AR-233, 14 through 19, MNWNC 109, MWNC 108, AR-1464, AR-626. All available State of California competitively bid contracts for information technology-related hardware, software, maintenance and support, and other related services on the state's commodity index, and El Dorado County bid number 17-42-040 for furniture and related items through the individual contract's term or any extended term and up to whatever amount is available within the existing department's budget. Four, delegate authority to IT to continue to place orders for copy paper and to department heads for the purchase of general office supplies up to departmental budgeted amount while the CAO's office evaluates competitive pricing contracts available. And five, direct the auditor controller to process payment for the same.
Wow. Can you repeat that? I didn't hear.
No.
Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Chair, we'll be voting on all these five issues at one vote, correct?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Unless somebody takes one out.
Okay.
Yes, Bonnie?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Bonnie Rich, Administration. This item is the beginning of an effort after a little more than a year of evaluating procurement activity to bring to the board some piggyback contracts that the departments need, in this case mostly IT, to continue to purchase goods and supplies. We have a purchasing division, but we don't have buyers. So for resources and for the ability to leverage on competitively bid contracts through other public agencies or cooperative... on competitively bid contracts through other public agencies or cooperative alliances, we are able to realize some pretty deep discounts through increased volumes that are presented by other agencies. IT has identified a number of contracts that they would like to piggyback on. They have been piggybacking on. We would otherwise have to put these items out to bid. We don't always have the ability to do that, so we have to find a way to work smarter and not harder. This is one way of doing that. We haven't been really good about bringing these to the board. This is an effort to do that. We did that last year with vehicles. You will see some others coming forward, some as cleanup and some as establishing new contracts to, from which we need to purchase from. So with the help of the auditor's office, we have started to identify where we are spending significant amounts, either with vendors or through the purchase of actual commodities. And so this item, in particular, number one identifies postage. Postage is not something that we can competitively bid. The feds set the rate. We, we need to purchase postage. IT is in charge of the mailroom and has that organizational key for running mail. Departments are also authorized to purchase postage on their own. This item is asking the board to exempt the purchase of postage from any competitive selection process and allow us to procure postage up to whatever amount departments have budgeted. One of the vendors that the auditor's office has flagged for us, where we've exceeded purchasing agent signature authority, is E+. There are a number of IT commodities that IT purchases from E+. We've exceeded $50,000. They are using a piggybackable contract. We need to have the board blessed to continue, continued use of that contract. There are a number of other contracts that Diane read off for the board. I need to point out that we did not specifically attach these contracts to the agenda item. They're rather large. The price list alone are multiple pages. If there's anyone that has an interest in receiving this information electronically, we can offer a hyperlink. I can email it to you. Let me know what you're interested in. But we could not attach a good portion of these documents to the agenda item. The good news is, is a good portion of these contracts are also used by the State of California. The other advantage is those terms and conditions have been negotiated for us for the benefit of counties. We have also started procuring furniture for various departments throughout the county. We have been utilizing El Dorado County's bid. That bid offers up to 70% off of list and also includes a prompt payment discount that is, is built in. There are some pretty substantial savings there. Also, for IT, the duplication fund is under the Information Technology Department, and so they purchase copy paper. Copy paper is a consumable general office supply. We, the county as a whole, I'm told several, several years ago, piggybacked on a U.S. community's contract for office supplies. We have not had a chance to evaluate that. We need to evaluate it. What we're asking the board here is to allow us to continue purchase paper supplies and general office supplies throughout county departments so we can continue to do business while we evaluate what contracts are available out there. We are currently under a commodity utilization review process where we have extracted reports from Office Devo, the vendor we're currently using, to do some shopping and price comparison with other agencies or cooperative agencies for what is available. But in a nutshell, and, and ask the auditor to continue process payment for those. So we're asking for the board to exempt postage, ratify purchasers that have exceeded the purchasing agent's authority this year with E+, allow us to piggyback on these contracts to continue purchasing the commodities that we need for IT, furniture, copy paper, and general office supplies. And we will continue with this cleanup effort and come back to board as we identify other commodities that we need to either piggyback on or put out for bid. There are several attachments in there as well. We tried to summarize for you what the contracts are, what their current term is, what the commodities are that we are purchasing. And so with that, I'll, I'll leave it to the board if you have. Oh, and then also the budget, the specific budgetary information with regard to which org key and object code those expenditures are coming from.
Supervisor Garamendi, your lights on? Supervisor Mills?
Yes. You talked about the agreements. I'm interested in what the, some of them are available online. I was able to get to them.
Yes.
Others I could not. What is the timeline to do this evaluation? You said you're in the process of doing it.
For a, you mean globally?
Globally.
Well, we have some challenges there. Supervisor Mills, I mean, we're working very closely with the auditor controllers. Right now, we only have the county's financial management system. We don't use a procurement system, so I can't track commodity utilization. Departments have authority to purchase up to a certain dollar amount, and, and we don't want to stop that. But it, it takes a little bit of time. I have to work with Rebecca. She helps me identify areas where, you know, where we might be spending a particular amount of money with a certain vendor. What we need to do is be able to look at the commodities as well. It's not just through whom we're paying, it's what are we buying? So to answer your question, it's going to take several months. It's, it's going to take several months.
Well, from that, my next question is, is that I would like this board eventually to have an opportunity to see and review a purchasing and contracting policy.
We had hoped last year to start on that. And that is something that CAO Lutz has made a top priority for me, for the public works ordinance and the purchasing ordinance. And so we are going, we are working on those, to bring those back, hopefully this year. And we're looking to bring that back, the public works ordinance this fall, the purchasing ordinance next spring, late spring, early summer. We have a lot of work to do. We have to craft the framework of the ordinance based on partly, not entirely, but partly on the activity. Without a means to track that activity, it's, a lot of things are a guesstimate.
Any other board comments? Supervisor Olivera, you getting your thoughts together?
[inaudible].
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept.
I have a couple of questions. What you're asking us to do here, at any time, would it exceed without our knowledge? Any budget for any of these, for IT or any other department? And what limits are we putting on here? It doesn't show any limits. I mean, as far as not coming back to us and them going out and purchasing whatever, and not exceeding, you know, is, is, are we asked, being asked to exceed any budgetary?
Absolutely not. We are strictly prohibited from doing that via government code. But if, in a perfect world, if we were able to analyze our needs, craft the specifications for a bid, put it out there on the streets, receive bids, evaluate, we would come to this board if it were purchases over the course of a fiscal year that exceeded the purchasing agent's signature authority. We would come to the board and ask the board to award the bid and authorize a blanket purchase order up to only whatever amount that department has budgeted.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Supervisor Olivera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Passes by zero. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Clapp, we'll start with you.
Didn't cost you a dime this week.
Supervisor Mills, you cost us anything?
It didn't cost us a dime, but I do want to mention on the Eastside GSA or Eastern GSA that there are 21 projects that have been identified throughout the San Joaquin Valley for that groundwater basin authority. But it was interesting to note that some of them, I started to do calculations on acre feet and divided by the cost per acre foot to do a project. And when they exceeded $15,000 an acre foot, I said, "Well, this, why do you even have this project in here? This makes no sense, when I can buy water at 600 an acre foot, even in Southern California?" So there has to be some sanity checking going on with these various projects and not be so much pie in the sky. The one that really is intriguing is the Farmington Dam. And if you have time, take a look at that because I think that's the one that we can contribute the most to in an overall scheme of things. It looks like the majority of the projects are intended to correct problems on the west side of the valley and not so much in the area where we have the highest amount of overdraft, which means I think we need to get that group to refocus and bring it back into the area of the overdraft and start to work on those problems. Because I think the state is eventually going to go in that direction, saying, "Well, yeah, you're fixing your basin as a whole, but you're not fixing the problem." And so that was part of what I was discussing with them at the meeting on Wednesday. I think that's all I have.
Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, I attended the Chamber Annual Awards Dinner, and I'm very proud to say that businesses in the Arnold and Murphy's area in District 3 took four of the awards, different categories. On Saturday, I held, I actually monitored a meeting with PG&E with the community regarding the recent debris and tree program as far as transmission line clearing. This was not a county-sponsored. I just happened to get PG&E and the community together. There will be holding other meetings. I believe Supervisor Garamendi is going to be talking on that in his area. Also attended the Big Trees Trail dedication. I was asked to present there as far as opening up the new five, I'm sorry, three census trail geared towards folks visually impaired. So very happy to be part of that process. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't think I cost the county any money. I actually think the county made money on me this year, this week, with all the events going on and all the tickets we're all having to buy to get everything. I think the net is going the other direction. With all, lots of love to Murphy's. I will, and my esteemed colleague here, Renegade Winery located in McCall Mill was awarded the top winery. So kudos to our local winery and lots of love to that side of the county.
And justly so.
Justly so.
Justly so. If you've ever been there, yes.
So that doesn't take anything away from Murphy's. It adds to the county.
I understand.
Okay.
All right. The only thing I have to report is something in the future. I did not cost between last Tuesday and this Tuesday the county any money. However, I would like to announce that Thursday, and no cost to the county, that the county will be putting forth a golf team to participate in the Tri-County Chamber Golf Tournament to be held at Saddle Creek in Copper Thursday, 10 o'clock it starts. Shotgun start then. And we have three county employees and we got one ringer. So hopefully, we did very well last year, and I'm banking that this year, we may come home with the top prize. So we'll have to wait and see the end of Thursday. That's all I have. Nothing for CAO? County Council? Nothing? Madam Clerk? Nothing? All right. We have nothing further. We'll go to lunch and come-
You're going to have to announce the closed session items-
Oh, you're right.
And ask for public comment.
You're right, so we don't have to come back. You're right. So we have to come back.
We got to, why don't we just come back for lunch?
Yeah, come back and then announce and then go-
Start fresh.
Or do public comments. Why don't we just do, why don't we announce it and then go have public comments and then go have lunch and come back? Okay. So people don't have to go the other way around.
Okay. Item 12 on the closed session agenda. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, two cases pursuant to Government Code Section
Any public comments on this item?
It's really just a question. Last time the board did an afternoon closed session like this, the public was told that since the camera was going to go home for the day, that it would be reenacted the following week for the camera so that people could see it, and it was not. So I'm curious to know, if I dare leave today, will I be able to see the, if there is a reporting out on the closed session item, will it be on video? That's my only question.
Thanks. Any other public comments?
Would you like to respond?
Yeah. Is there any other public comments? If not, we'll close public comment. Madam Clerk?
So I would like to say that when the closed sessions, when the report out is at the end of the day and the camera is already gone, the board does come back. They report out in this room with me. And then at the next meeting, we report it out at the beginning of the meeting, just like we do with the other closed sessions. So we have done that.
Okay, item number 13.
Item number 13. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Calaveras Cannabis Legal Defense Fund at All versus County of Calaveras at All, Calaveras Superior Court Case Number 18CV43043.
Any public comments? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Item 14. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none? We will have lunch. And then when we come back, we will go into closed session.
What time?
And it's 1:00 right now, so we will come back at 2:30?
I'm not going to be back until you put out.
She's not coming back.
I know, I know she's not coming back.
2:00, good.
2:00? All right, 2:00. We'll be back at 2:00.